We have the quorum. I will now call the public hearing of April twenty third. Uh, it's reconvened from the April twen- uh, April, April seventeenth, twenty twenty five to order. This, this meeting is being convened in person and by electronic means. As such, commi- uh, council members may participate in person or electronic means, and we don't have anyone online, right? Okay, thank you. Members of public can view the proceedings via live stream and YouTube link, which will be posted on X at One City Clerk. In case of an emergency where we need to evacuate the building, I would like to direct your attention to the axes. There are two axes beyond the glass doors and to the left. If these axes are obstructed, please direct your atten- your attention to the four axes in this council chamber. Please use stairs, do not use the elevator. If you require accessibility assistance, please remain at your location and wait for security staff to get you to a safe location. I would also like to highlight that there is a defibrillator located at the end of hallway outside of the council chamber. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded homelands of Musqueam, Squamish, and the Slees Wautus people. We thank them for having care of this land and look, and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contribution of City of Vancouver staff members, who work hard every day to help make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play. Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor Sim has a leave of absence for personal reasons all day. Councillor Kirby Young. Councillor Dominado. Councillor Bly has a leave of absence for civic business all day. Councillor Fry. Councillor Montague. Councillor Classen. Councillor Meisner has a leave of absence for personal reasons all day. Acting Mayor Joe is in the chair. Councillor Orr. Councillor Maloney. You have quorum, Acting Mayor Joe.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Before we begin, I have some announcement. Uh, the public may participate by speaking in person, by phone, or by submitting written comments to mayor and council. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they, they, they support or oppose the recommendations and, and if they are a resident of Vancouver if it is not noted on the, on the speaker's list. Speakers representing four or more individuals or groups, including themselves, will have eight minutes to speak. Each individual or group being represented must confirm their representation by introducing themselves either in person or online. Individuals representing by another speaker cannot, uh, also speak independently. Speakers may only speak once and should follow along on X at One City Clerk for updates on the progress of the meeting, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing through our online mayor and, and council public hearing feedback web form. The link will be posted on X. Any speakers who pre-registered with presentation are reminded that public live feed has a slight delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next, so that clerk may advance your slides. I also want to note City of Vancouver's longstanding commitment to equity, diversity, and inclusion, including utmost respect for all genders. I remind council that when addressing speakers and staff, we will avoid using gender honorifics and we will instead refer to the person by last and, uh, by first and the last name, role or title. A reminder that council's role at public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means council is to only consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage destination. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant and, uh, or technical advice from staff, but should save debate for after the close of the speaker's list. After hearing from the speakers, council may, there are three options: one, approve the application in principle; two, refuse the application; or three, refer the application to staff for further consideration. Finally, if council does not conclude the hearing from all speakers this evening, we will recess and reconvene the meeting on Thursday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at three P M. Okay, so we have the first item tonight, which is, uh, CD one rezoning, four six one to four seven nine, East Sixteenth Avenue. On Thursday last week, April seventeenth, twenty twenty five, council heard the staff presentation, asked question to staff and applicants, heard from the public speakers, and closed the speaker's list, also the receipt of the, of the public comments for this item. We will now continue with the closing comments, question to staff, and debate and decision. Council members who were absent for this item at, at public hearing on Thursday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty five, will need to confirm they have reviewed the proceedings they missed and are therefore eligible to participate in debate, discussion, and decision. Okay, Councillor Montague is not here, so I will skip this part. Only Councillor Montague means, okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna continue. Does the applicant team have any closing comments? Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, uh, members of council and chair, acting mayor. My name is David Jacobson, and I am a partner at Fabric Living. With me today, we have Jordan McDonald, CEO of Fabric Living, as well as Kevin Bodnar, who is a partner at Geopacific, uh, geotechnical engineers. What we heard from the public speakers last Thursday night was a balance of opposition and support for the project. Supporters included area residents, employers, employees, business owners who recognized the need for more rental housing close to transit work and amenities. Opponents, for the most part, were well organized and primarily representative of the immediate neighbors to the east and west, who are understandably concerned about the changes taking place as a result of the Broadway Plan in general and perceive negative impacts that these changes might have on their individual situations, citing property damage and personal safety as a big concern. We have heard these concerns, and we want to reassure our neighbors and council that we will take all required steps to ensure any risks are dealt with appropriately. We have experience with peat soils on other properties that are now well under construction, and we have a full, uh, we have full confidence in our team and the city to ensure that we proceed appropriately. We have hired one of the province's most experienced geotechnical engineers, one of Canada's largest structural engineering firms, and engaged I T C, a prominent and experienced construction company, to assist us with early pre-construction engineering, planning, and budgeting. Sample drilling has been conducted wherever possible, given the existing structures and residents on the properties and the limited permissions granted to us to date. Future investigation is absolutely required and intended. Various maps of the peat area exist, and the information is inconsistent, with the city's own van map system showing it well outside of the boundaries of our site. We do not take any potential risk of settlement or damage on neighboring property or streets lightly, since this liability falls squarely on us. From a technical point of view, given the shallow depth of the peat in the area, a single level of parking with a three-story townhome development that matches our neighbors would require a similar mitigating measure during construction. At the adjacent development, temporary piles and concrete blocks were used along the perimeter to support the excavation. The layer of peat was removed and backfilled with structural material, and traditional foundations were used to support that building. The difference when it comes to a larger building is that the hole we have to dig is deeper, and so the temporary support of the excavation walls and mitigation of soil dewatering is more complex and costly, but it's entirely manageable with or without underpinning and encroachment agreements. We engaged early with both of our neighbors about our plans to redevelop the site and initiated discussions about underpinning and encroachment agreements starting in twenty twenty three. These discussions were advanced to a formal legal agreement with the Western neighboring strata. Final details and fees were being discussed between lawyers, with most recent emails dating to just thirteen months ago, March twenty twenty four, at which point the strata ceased to communicate with us despite numerous attempts to continue dialogue over the issue. In addition to the efforts that we will clearly be making to mitigate concerns expressed by the neighbors, we have to stress that city staff have the ultimate final control over reviewing the analysis and planning of our team. These future safeguards are clearly articulated in the staff report to council and the rezoning bylaw conditions one point two three, A to D. The future work to be undertaken will closely, be closely examined as binding conditions of both development permit and subsequent building permit. We fully anticipate having to survey and monitor the surrounding properties and streets before, during, and after construction, as is typical in such cases. We would also be happy to include a condition that requires a professional peer review of our team's work. At rezoning, which is the subject of this public hearing, the primary question is really land use and form of development, with technical resolution and all project issues related to technical information being resolved well ahead of us here at D P and B P. Since we, there were several suggested deficiencies or inconsistencies highlighted during last week's public presentations regarding rezoning items, I would like to briefly address these. Number one, minimum site frontage. As defined in chapter seven of the Broadway Plan, site frontage is less than one hundred and fifty feet are acceptable under certain criteria and at the discretion of the Director of Planning. Staff have reviewed these criteria and confirmed that the proposal satisfied all requirements for the slightly reduced frontage of one hundred and thirty-two feet. Minimum unit sizes. Given the general lack of affordability in the city, the simplest way to keep rents affordable while also delivering below-market rental units is to make all homes as efficient, compact, and livable as possible. For clarity, a larger home is by nature more expensive. We locate our projects in highly walkable, amenity-rich communities close to transit and employment to reduce the need and cost of owning a car. Our building, uh, our building amenities provide opportunities for people to work, socialize, exercise, and play outside of their home, which fosters community through regular interactions and allows a resident to live a larger life than just within their own four walls. We know staff will be scrutinizing our detailed plans at the development permit stage, and we look forward and will be well-prepared to demonstrate how smaller, more affordable homes can still be functional and comfortable. There were concerns expressed about tenant displacement. This is a rare proposal in the Broadway Plan, with minimal rental tenant displacement. Two tenants in secondary rental are eligible for benefits and protections under the TRPP, and Fabric will meet or exceed these minimum expectations. Additionally, a third tenant who spoke at public hearing seems to have had a difficult past experience as a renter in the city. At this time, we have not closed on the property that Mr. Tim Lai lives at, and we are not yet his landlord. While he is not technically eligible under the TRPP, we recognize the disruption a move might cause to his life and are committed to working with him and providing assistance as appropriate. We have been in communication with Mr. Lee as recently as this weekend. Two hundred and eleven new secured rental homes, forty-three of them at below-market rents, will replace three unsecured secondary rental units. Number four, the, uh, family unit mix in the below-market rental units. To clarify, the current ratio of family rental, uh, family units in the below-market rental is thirty-four point nine percent. It should be thirty-five. The simple fix is simply to substitute one of the studios for one of the two or three beds, and that will be resolved at development permit. That was simply a rounding error. Amenities not emitting minimum requirements. Uh, the amenities planned are in fact in excess of the minimum requirements as currently designed. Uh, they're about eight hundred square feet larger than required. Maximum building height. The maximum building height referred to in the rezoning conditions is two hundred and ten feet, with additional height allowed for rooftop amenity and mechanical and electric, uh, mechanical and elevator overruns to two hundred and thirty-eight feet. As currently measured, the maximum building height to the top of our mechanical and elevator overruns is two hundred and twenty-nine feet, which is nine feet lower than the maximum allowed. Number seven, not all units have balconies. Only two of the two hundred and eleven units proposed do not presently have balconies shown on the plans. This is actually because they face the neighboring strata, and out of respect for the privacy of those units, we suggested that these homes have Juliet balconies instead. We will work with staff to determine the preferred approach at the D P stage to these two homes. Not enough car parking. As council is aware, there is no reinfor- there's no enforced parking minimum for cars. We are providing a balance of parking, community car share, and substantial bike infrastructure to make sure we support the use of multimodal and transit options. This includes a cargo bike and charging room accessed from the lane at ground level, which is usually located below ground. A bike wash and service station complete with tools and racks, also conveniently located off the lane, and two hundred and eighty-three total bike storage spaces, secured and well-maintained. Traffic infrastructure improvements included as part of the off-site upgrades delivered by this project will assist in mitigating both traffic and safety concerns that exist today. It is also worth noting that East Sixteenth is a dedicated secondary arterial road, appropriate for high-density housing close to transit. The development site is a fifteen-minute slow walk to the new main and Broadway subway station. And the last point, number nine, maximum density. The project has been financially burdened with a significant off-site servicing upgrade, with the majority of the work being one and a half blocks from our project site that will, to an extent, address the stormwater flows in the area. As mentioned by an adjacent owner in the neighborhood, the flooding in the area has become more of a problem with the increase in extreme weather events and needs to be addressed to ensure there isn't further damage to people's homes during these flooding events. Our consultant team, Aplin and Martin, met with the city's engineers and planners, and it was determined that these upgrades, while not specifically triggered by our proposal, are critically needed for the area. The increase in the proposed density from six point eight FSR to eight supports the construction of this necessary infrastructure, essentially having private development pay for something city resources would otherwise have to cover. The additional density can comfortably be accommodated on the property without encroaching on any setbacks or built form guidelines, and importantly, without increasing the height of the building. That concludes my remarks, but, uh, Jordan McDonald would like to make some closing comments, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council, for allowing me to speak today. My name is Jordan McDonald, and I am the CEO of Fabric Living. You know, hearing the neighbors speak last week was, was hard on us in our office just to, just to hear, um, just to hear some of the challenges that, um, they had with our development. And, you know, we hear and understand those neighbors, um, especially the immediate neighbors of these developments that are impacted. Um, and I, I think that we emphasize with all neighbors of the future developments that are pro- proposed throughout the city as we're continuing to add, add more density. Um, the city's population is growing, and I think the only way to house this growing population is to increase the housing supply. And given the geographical constraints of Vancouver, that, that naturally means building up. We care deeply about community, and we make our best efforts to give back and enhance the communities that we develop in. I would like to list off just a few of the many community initiatives that we focus on. We recently launched a social purpose community building pilot project with Mini Village in one of our rental buildings, which is the first of its kind in Vancouver in the private sector. Mini Village is focused on building and fostering happy communities within multifamily properties. We've hosted free community events, including a graffiti festival in Clark Park, and we've also hosted a free haunted house and pumpkin, pumpkin giveaway, giving away two thousand pumpkins to the residents near Trout Lake. We've raised funds to significantly upgrade the school equipment and learning environment of Admiral Seymour Elementary School in Strathcona. We annually support and raise funds for the battered women's support services, and we set up our projects from the outset to donate one percent of our development's profits back to a grassroots charitable initiative in the immediate area, which will also apply to this development. All fabric developments are in the city of Vancouver. Fabric is literally all in on building homes in this city. For absolute clarity, we are not speculators. One only needs to take a stroll around East Van to see a number of our completed fabric projects, multifamily, and new developments under construction, Assembly, Habitat, Left Field, The Cut, et cetera. We are very, very active in developing homes in Vancouver. Fabric projects have and are contributing over a thousand homes to the city of Vancouver, with the majority of those being rental homes, which include secured below-market rental and also supportive social housing homes. I would like to address the statements made by Mr. Tim Lai that spoke out last week. He was, he was the tenant that, uh, my partner David was referring to. It was really sad for us to hear how he had been treated, and I'm sorry that he's going through that. I want to be clear that we would never treat our tenants like that. And for further clarity, we are not Mr. Tim Lai's current landlord, as we have not closed on that property that he occupies yet. That being said, we will commit to be going above and beyond what is required for Mr. Tim Lai, and will ensure that he is well taken care of, including one year of free rent in his current home, covering moving expenses, and a write-a-first offer on one of the below-market rental homes in this project. For clarity, the details of this have not yet been discussed with Mr. Tim Lai, but we will be discussing that with him when we close on the properties. In closing, I want to quickly recap some of the key benefits of this project. Two hundred and eleven secure rental homes. This is a seventy times increase in the number of existing rental homes on this property. Forty-three below-market rental homes. There's only three tenants being displaced from the existing properties. That is rare in the Broadway Plan, as a lot of the properties in the Broadway Plan are larger multifamily buildings. The properties that are being redeveloped are less attainable housing forms, including larger duplexes and single-family homes that are approaching the end of their economic life. We are adding a vibrant community cafe and provision shop on the ground floor for the building residents and neighbors of the community to socialize. We are committed to building, fostering, and enhancing communities in the city of Vancouver. This project is no exception. Thank you, Acting Mayor and Council.
Thank you. All right, does staff have, have any closing comments?
No closing comments, but we want to note that, uh, engineering staff is present today.
Thank you. Uh, does council member have any final questions, uh, to, to, to staff? Uh, Councillor Kirby.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Um, I appreciated the closing comments, but I do want to zero in specifically on the soil issue. Um, because we did hear, I, I think, what are some legitimate concerns, given sort of the, uh, topology of the area? And so I'm just referencing page eleven, um, the references that those were concerns that came forward uh, for residents, uh, about groundwater air of concern, particularly on peat boglands, ex- existing sore, uh, poor soil conditions, um, are anxious about damage to their properties, challenges during construction, uh, and references that the, the preliminary hydrological report has not shown enough analysis to measure the stability of the marshy lands for this development. And then on page twelve, in response, it indicates the city is aware that the site is located on one of the city's largest known peat areas and presents a geotechnical risk. Um, staff reviewed the report, um, but expect that the risks, I'm paraphrasing the here for time, uh, will be addressed in the geotechnical report. So given this is one of the largest areas and that a risk has been identified, can you speak to why that report can't be required? Why it's included in the rezoning process? Because I think regu- members of the public would think, why can't you deal with the risk and assume that it's viable to develop without damage? Um, and why do this as a part of the rezoning?
I'll gift us to Chalice, the senior engineer that's present.
Good afternoon, Council. Uh, my name is Charles Joseph. I'm the Associate Director in the Engineering Services Department in the Development Major Projects, uh, Branch. So we coordinate all, uh, rezoning development and building permit applications through the engineering department and provide feedback. Uh, we rely entirely on the professional reports, designs, and studies that are provided by the applicant, uh, and it is their responsibility to produce the reports in order to-
Can I, can I just, because I have, we have very limited time? So I need to just guide you to kind of the heart of the question, which is if we rely on the applicant and you're saying that there isn't sufficient information yet to identify if the risk is mitigated, why would we, um, why would staff recommend a rezoning if there's insufficient information at this time?
So the hyd- the preliminary hydrogeological report that was provided by the professionals generally meets the guidelines that the city has set out in the groundwater management bulletin for what should be submitted at a rezoning stage. It is then further detailed at the development permit and building permit stage, and it will inform the final shoring design and any sort of mitigating measures that are required onsite and offsite. So generally, what has been submitted in this application is consistent with what we receive on other rezoning applications.
Okay, so if, uh, issues are identified, you're saying that you're confident that there's mitigating measures that can be taken, that it wouldn't be severe enough that it would, uh, impede the ability for the development to proceed?
So it is up to the professional to advance the studies and any sort of site investigations and come up with what those mitigating measures and designs would be in order to offset any sort of onsite and offsite impacts from their development.
And so what happens if, let's say, they say this is pretty significant? It would require a level of mitigation we haven't previously recommended, and we don't necessarily see it's, it's, uh, there's a financial, an economically viable or a viable option? What happens then to the project?
It's up to the applicant to decide how to proceed, but the professional has a responsibility to ensure they produce a report and a design that protects, uh, public and private infrastructure.
Okay, and then who signs off on the report and deems that there's an acceptable mitigation and it's minimizing risk to surrounding neighbors?
So professionals in B C are regulated under the Professional Governance Act by the Providence Province, and then we are further regulated by Engineers and Geoscience B C. So the professional seals the report and they submit the report or the design that's at the appropriate stage for either rezoning, development permit, or building permit. So it progresses in design and detail throughout the development process. The city receives those.
I just have thirty seconds. I may have to move a second round. So can I ask a question a different way? Are you saying that city just receives the report? The city doesn't technically approve them?
The city does not perform additional engineering work on the work that is provided by another professional. We do have the ability to condition a peer review.
That, that actually doesn't directly answer my question. So Chair, can I, can I move for a second round, please?
Yeah, one second. Okay, second by Councillor Classen. All those in favor say yeah?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna come back on for that one. Thank you.
Motion passed. Thanks. All right, thanks, Councillor. Councillor Classen?
Uh, thanks very much. Um, questions that came in from speakers regarding the transitorial area, uh, circumference, um, and I just kind of wondering, uh, it, um, uh, apparently this particular site fell out of that radius of, by, I don't know, let's just say dozens of meters perhaps. Um, is there a, um, a hard and fast approach towards the TOA that, that means that once we're outside of that boundary, that it, it, it has different sort of implications?
I'm gonna ask my colleague from Broadway Plan to answer that one.
Hi, Councillor. Thanks for the question. Chris Ma with the Special Projects Office. So, uh, the, the TOA legislation sets minimum heights and densities within certain proximities from transit. Uh, it does not set maximum, so the city is, uh, has the authority and the ability to, uh, prescribe higher heights and densities than what the TOA legislation prescribes. Uh, that's what's happening in this case. This falls outside of the TOA legislation, but the Broadway Plan, uh, sets policy, um, um, that's, that's guiding this development.
I want to talk about, uh, the groundwater, uh, question just because we had quite an intensive discussion around the Remper and Rupert plans, uh, very clear no-go zones for any, anything that went below, uh, even a few feet. Um, yet we've now approved, uh, projects at Seventeenth and Fraser and at Kingsway and Fraser, which would appear to fall within that, that, uh, that area of, uh, peat and, and water impacts and groundwater. Just can you explain to me how we're sort of justifying that based upon our policy?
I'll give it to Chalice in a second, but I worked also on the Rupert and Renfrew plan, and the special case in Rupert and Renfrew is that there's still creek, right? That we want a daylight, and all the groundwater is feeding the creek. And so if you would put parkades in the underground in that area, it would dry out that creek. And so it's a different situation here where we don't have that danger for that happening, and that required a certain policy response. But I'm happy, happy to give it to Chalice for more specific.
Uh, yes, Suzanne covered it generally. So there are different, uh, groundwater and geotechnical conditions between the two areas. One is a peat bog, and the other one more relates to, uh, the groundwater table and how-
and how it feeds into Still Creek and the ecological health associated with it.
So what I heard from previous responses is that we may end up discovering something by doing the excavation there. I know that the development at Seventeenth and Fraser has had its demolitions, basically been raised to the ground. They have not, to my understanding, dug below the surface yet. Again, they're about two blocks away from the sites, similar soil conditions. What happens if we do get down there, having removed the housing, the existing housing, and we discover that, that it's, it's going to be very challenging to build there?
So again, it is up to the professional to submit whatever they believe are the appropriate mitigating measures and identify the risks to the city. There are additional measures in place by EGBC. There are practice advisories in place to deal with high-risk professional activities that already require independent reviews. They have a peer review practice guideline, and that allows members of the public to request a peer review to be done on professional work, or it enables authorities having jurisdiction like the city of Vancouver to also require a peer review. And that can then occur either prior to enactment, it can occur prior to development permit, and/or it can occur during construction if we do have concerns.
Okay, I got about a minute left. There are a number of six-story developments that have happened along Fraser Street, Nineteenth, and other places. We have seen a bit of settling. I know there were some piles driven in in the case of at least one or two of those buildings. Do we go back and analyze and decide, you know, from those experiences, any implications for, for future development?
Yes, we have learned through previous phases of development along Fraser Street. So you will see now within our conditions within a peat area, we require survey monitoring prior to the start of construction to establish a baseline of the movement in the area because the, the infrastructure is moving on an ongoing basis. And that pre-construction survey allows us to understand the direct impact of the excavation as it occurs and require the developer to respond to that and repair any damage to our infrastructure.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's my time.
Thanks. Councilor Orr?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks to the applicant for clearing up a lot of those issues I was, I was going to ask about, especially with the resident, Tim Lai, as well as the question on frontage, as well as the question on traffic as well. And Councilors Claussen and Kirby Young entered, asked some of my questions as well. But I was wondering maybe if you could, or maybe your colleague at the Broadway Plan could kind of speak to the differences between the transit-oriented area of the province and the Broadway Plan in terms of tenant protections, the differences in tenant protections and affordable housing requirements between those two different scenarios?
Chris, you may want to start, and then maybe Housing can chime in too on that?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Chris Ma. So just to be clear, the transit-oriented areas legislation doesn't have any tenant protections. The tenant protections in this case are coming as a result of the Broadway Plan policies.
Okay, yeah, that's what I, that's what I was wondering. Yeah, that, that definitely answers my question. And then maybe in terms of the geological work, I just because I, it's very fascinating learning all this. I did take some geology recently in university, so it's definitely of interest. But, so you're, you're satisfied generally with, with the professionals that have done this work? And they've, you know, and you wouldn't, you don't necessarily see room for an independent hydrogeological investigation? You're satisfied with the work that's being done?
So we are open to requiring a peer review. We hadn't initially set that as a condition, but it can be added as a condition of enactment. And we had planned to consider looking at that in the development permit stage when we receive the final hydrogeological report, which will inform the designs onsite and any offsite measures.
Okay, so sorry, just because I'm new, we can ask that in this meeting here?
Yes, my understanding is that Council could bring forward a motion to introduce a peer review as a condition of enactment.
Okay. That's very, that's very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Dominado?
Thank you, Chair. Appreciate a couple of elements I wanted to follow up on have been addressed. I do want to circle back to one of the speakers. I'm just trying to see if I can find. One of the speakers referenced a letter submitted to the city. I believe the date was October twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four. Has that letter been circulated to Council? It was referenced, and there was indication during a public hearing that no response was received from the city. And I'm curious if, if, if there was a response, if there's any knowledge of the letter. Can it be submitted into the public records so that we have it on record? As part of the public hearing now that's been raised and identified?
I am, when it, when it was received, I shared it with all relevant teams, including engineering, my superiors, Director of Planning, and I also shared it with legal services. We usually do not share any communications at that point with Council, but we advise the public that they can at the point when it wants it's referred, they can again address Council, which I believe they did. And then it's for me to leave it to legal services, but they are online and can answer that question any further unless Templar wants to say a word. Jeff, you're online. Maybe you want to say something on that?
Yeah, it's Jeff Greenberg. And yes, we have a copy of that letter and have provided some advice already. And we would be happy to provide further advice in camera to Council with respect to the legal implications of that letter.
Okay, um, okay, and this is the one from October, correct?
Yes, I believe it's the letter from October twenty-twenty-four.
Thank you. And related to correspondence, can I just confirm with a procedural question to the clerks? We've also received correspondence this afternoon on the subject of this public hearing. Are we still receiving correspondence for consideration? Or accepting, I guess would be the term?
Sorry, Counselor, we were just having a technical issue.
It's okay. If the Chair will afford me a bit of extra time. It's a procedural question. So Council has received an email from a resident who spoke, or I don't know if they're a resident, but they represent a resident, who spoke the other day. I'm curious, are we accepting new correspondence as part of the public hearing as part of a submission at this time still? I think it largely reinforces in part something he spoke to.
Yes, thanks, Counselor. So receipt of public comments was closed last week during the, the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. And I want to just, two more questions. I'm going to circle back to the subject of, there was a number of presentations made by the public around discrepancies, disparities around the geotechnical work. And unfortunately, I don't think the applicant can speak to that now other than the presentation they made earlier. Do staff have any other further comment on that other than the, the notion that we can add a condition of a peer review, which I've heard a couple of times, I heard the applicant speak to that as well?
I can just, just one thing I want to say is that we are quite confident that like a lot of issues can be solved at D P and B P. And the city building official will also look at it from a building code perspective and a safety perspective. So, you know, I don't want to misspoke, misspeak, but we can stop this project at any time if there's any, you know, evidence that there would be any danger. But we also have a lot of confidence in our engineers that that will not happen. But I'll give it to Chalice.
Hi, yes, so already included in the report are some requested revisions or required revisions to the preliminary hydrogeological report, asking them to do further and more thorough site investigation. So hopefully that helps respond to some of the concerns identified by the public and the, the other engineer that provided a report.
Okay, that's super helpful. I'm just going to try to squeeze in one more question, which is back to Jeff, it's just on the subject of that October twenty-fourth letter. Am I understanding correctly that it's a letter of a legal nature? And so the only way to get more information or understanding the implications of that would be to refer this and to get legal advice, correct? Jeffrey, there? Or Grant?
Jeff, are you there?
Can you just pause my timer and just, I lost a bit of time.
I am.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we have twenty seconds.
Could you please repeat that question, Chair?
So just back to the October letter. I'm understanding from your comments, it's a, the letter is legal in nature, and the only way to have an understanding of what the implications of that letter are is for us to go in camera. Is that correct?
That's correct. If you want us to provide some advice with respect to that letter, we could certainly do that in camera.
And I don't think any, Council hasn't seen the letter, just to be clear. Has anyone seen it?
I don't know if Council has seen the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. Councilor Fry?
Yeah, I mean, first off, just to say, the project itself, the location, everything, I'm, it looks great, but the hydrogeological concerns do kind of remain prevalent, I think, in mind because I think, you know, the delivery of housing is great, the design's great, the amenities are great. When I asked this question previously, I was told there was no stream, but I've since looked it up on van map. There is a stream thirty meters west of this location, and it's, and twenty meters north is the peat zone. And, and, and I don't think this was staff that answered it. I think it may have been the geotech from the applicant. So I am concerned that, you know, like, that preliminary assessment may not have kind of identified what is clearly on our own van map. And I guess this is, so, and I've, I've heard what you've had to say that, that ultimately at D P, this will be the decision that's made in the, in the peer-reviewed hydrogeological assessment of more substance than what we have right now, which is a preliminary. I guess my question is maybe more for legal staff. How exposed are we? And I, and I really appreciate Counselor Dominado clearing up the letter that we just received after public hearing comments have been closed. But does, uh, does approving a rezoning at this point with these potential concerns that should be addressed at D P, does it somehow fetter the D P at all? Are we, are we setting ourselves up for some kind of legal jeopardy? That's a question for Jeff or Grant.
Yes, Council. Again, I would, I would say we could provide that advice to you for sure in an in-camera basis, but not provide that on the floor of Council.
Okay, that's fair. I guess, I mean, and again, I'm no hydrogeologist. This stuff is all pretty new to me. I was taking it really personally, hearing all this stuff about peat this and peat that. And I was like, wait a second. But, but I, but I am curious, like, it does seem to me that displacing water, and it looks to me like the stream map kind of goes downhill, stops in the peat bog, and then reappears after the peat bog. So it seems that there is some kind of underground stream, some kind of hydrogeological. What does, what does displacement of water mean on adjacent properties? And is that a consideration that we should be more on top of?
Chalice will answer that, but there is an aquifer, as I learned also through this rezoning, that's quite close. And it has a specific name, which, which I have to look up, but Chalice might know better than me.
Yes, so we do, that is why we have the Groundwater Management Bulletin and is applicable at rezoning or at development permit stage. And it does go through this iterative process of moving the report along. We do also have ways to address, should any additional water be encountered during excavation and shoring? And we do have checks and balances in place, both for the professional but also on the city inspection side so that we can require the site to respond to those if they are encountered during construction.
Are we confident in the science and the ability to monitor topographical shifts as groundwater moves around on adjacent properties? Like, say, twenty meters away, thirty meters, forty meters?
So there, there is a condition in there already that talks about pre- enduring construction surveys that should be able to keep track of how that infrastructure may move on the public property. And then the professional needs to determine what are those offsite impacts on private property and work with those other private property owners to mitigate those.
Are you called a pre-enduring? Is that, is that just, is that actually like a, a LiDAR-type survey that says this is what the height is now and if it changes?
I, I can't presuppose what that is. It would be up to the professional to make those recommendations to the city, and the city would consider those in improving the permit.
And do we have dedicated sort of hydrogeological staff on engineering that will be able to review this professional material and opine on it?
We do have professional staff within the engineering department, but we have to have a fine balance between our role as a professional and our, our role as a regulator and ensuring that the professional that is actually responsible for the design and the project is taking all responsibility and liability associated with their design and their project, right?
That includes offsite?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Councilor Maloney?
I, I have several questions. All of them pretty much relate to the geotechnical studies. I think it would really help the public and the counselors to have some more information about the questions that were raised by public speakers about the location of the boreholes being outside the map of the peat bog. So can somebody give us some more information about that, please?
Chalice or her staff, I think you can answer that.
So we don't typically impose specific requirements of exactly where a professional should do their site investigation. It's up to them to come up with the appropriate plan and do that site investigation. What we have conditioned is that further investigation is required, and it will be up to the professional to submit that to our, our team, and we will take a look and see if we think it meets our standards.
And will we have a chance to weigh in on that at a later stage? Or is that something that just happens between staff and the applicant?
Uh, Council would not weigh in on that again typically in the future. If you do produce an enactment condition related to peer review as part of the response back to confirming that we enact the zoning, staff would need to confirm that that condition had been addressed satisfactorily to the city.
So in order for there to be peer review, one of us is, needs to move a motion to require that during this process? It's not something that staff require in any event?
We had not initially set one as part of our engineering review as a prior to enactment condition. So if you would like that added here for this rezoning, you would need to do so. We can still add a peer review as a prior to development permit or prior to building permit requirement.
Can you just quickly point us to which building conditions, I mean, which conditions are going to be relevant to the geotechnical requirements just to reassure the public about what is actually going to be in here?
Within the rezoning report?
Yep.
So there, in the first section, there is a requirement to update the hydrogeological report. I would need to go back to my seat and maybe find where exactly what that number is for you. Appendix B one point two four is the condition for the updated preliminary hydrogeological report.
Yep. All right. So in terms of access to private properties, is that something that will be, that's just up to the private property owner, is it? Whether they allow monitoring access on their property?
Yes, it's been treated to private property owners to determine, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Councilor Kabyan, second round?
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate the detailed responses. This is for engineering follow-up. And I appreciate the detailed, the other, your colleague. I appreciate the detailed answers before. I, I guess I'm just in sort of layman's terms, just wanting to clarify sort of simply that if the applicant has the further required third-party professional geotechnical and hydrological studies, and they show an issue, then the city could refuse the project proceeding further at that point. Is that right?
Yes, if the reports are not provided to the city in a satisfactory form or we are not satisfied with the shoring design, that it meets any of our bylaws, our standards, or any sort of professional practice guidelines, we do, we are not required to issue a permit or clear our, our engineering review.
Can you, can you drill into that for me? What kind of specific bylaws or guidelines might we have that would relate to- What kind of, um, specific, um, bylaws or guidelines might we have that would relate to this particular study and situation, uh, with respects to the peat?
There are specific clauses within, uh, the VBBL, uh, that relate to construction in, uh, peat area. We also have the specific requirements or guidelines, sorry, set out in the groundwater management bulletin. And then in addition to that, uh, EGBC has professional practice, uh, advisories related to engineering, uh, geoscience for buildings, uh, and also related to high risk activities, uh, high risk activities and professional work.
Okay, that's helpful because it, that rounds out the picture a little bit, I think, versus just the external reviews, is that we do have our own standards that need to be met?
We have our own standards, yes, and we are regulated by an accredited, uh, organization being EGBC.
Okay, that's great. I'm gonna leave it there for now. Thank you.
Thanks, Consular Dominado.
Um, last week, I believe there was a speaker who referred to, um, reference to an FOI, and I'm not sure if it was with the city. Do we have any outstanding FOIs on this subject with the city?
Um, Jeff, do you want to answer that? Or Templar, is that like for you? Jeff?
Jeff?
Yeah, sorry, could you please repeat that question, Consular Kebiong? I'm, I apologize.
Dominado, that's okay.
I'm sorry.
Um, uh, last week, a speaker referenced that they had filed an FOI with the city, and I'm just curious if that FOI is complete or if there's anything outstanding.
Yeah, my understanding is that, um, a response was provided by the applicant to the, um, FOI, uh, requestor. And, um, I think they spoke about, uh, their thoughts about it the other night.
Okay.
But I believe the applicant provided information to them.
Okay, so we believe that to be closed?
Uh, I can't say that the, the, the requestor was, was satisfied. I think they spoke the other night to their thoughts on that. Um, so I, I, I wouldn't say that it's completely resolved, no.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. That's all my questions for now. Thanks.
Good, thanks, Consular. All right, so seeing no other Consular on the line, uh, Clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of the public comments? Oh, okay, thank you. All right. Okay, I'd like to remind Consular that, uh, we will need to move the recommendations for item four, together with the yellow memo dated April the seventh, twenty twenty five, entitled the CD one rezoning four six one and four, uh, two four seven nine East Sixteenth Avenue. Uh, Council will now make a decision on this application. Do we have mover? Move by Consular Kebiong? Do we have a second there? Second by Consular Claussen. All right, so Consular Member, is there any discussion? Consular Dominado? Oh, okay, so Consular Maloney first. Yeah, I'll advance you. Please go ahead.
Uh, I, I would like to move an amendment to, um, require peer review, um, of the hydrological report, um, but I'm gonna need, um, a short, um, recess to sort that out. Um, so, um, I-
Three minutes recess? How much time you need?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay, yeah, so we're gonna be back, uh, four oh one. Five minutes recess. Okay, so let's continue. So I think everyone received the, uh, the amendment, uh, from, from Consular Maloney. Uh, okay, so I'll, uh, oh, this is a motion, not amendment. Camera is all right? Yeah, so I just want to make sure that is, uh, I need to move her to the amendment queue. It's amendment, okay, so, okay, so Consular Maloney, please add yourself there in the queue. So I'll add you to the amendment queue. Yeah, okay, so we need a second for this amendment as well. Second by Consular Claussen. Uh, all right, so please introduce your amendment, Consular Maloney.
Uh, so this amendment is to require, um, peer review, um, whether that's one review or several, um, to the satisfaction of the city, um, uh, on the, um, preliminary and final hydro geological and geotechnical reports and shoring design provided by the developers' professionals at the developer's cost prior to rezoning and enactment development and building permit issuance. And I think that will certainly allay a lot of my own fears and hopefully those of the, the public.
Thank you. Consular Dominado, amendment.
Yeah, uh, thanks, Chair. I'm happy to support, um, the amendment and I've heard, um, as the applicant was outlining, uh, their response to concerns that were raised, they indicated that they would be open to that as well. Um, and so I'm, I'm willing to support that and I, I think it, it serves, um, many interests, uh, in terms of, um, comfort for the public with, uh, this proposal. Um, and again, I've heard from staff and the applicant that this is, um, not unusual, so I'm happy to support that. Thank you.
Thanks, Consular Claussen.
Yeah, I did, uh, also will be supporting Consular Maloney's amendment. I just, uh, I think just the extra rigor in this particular instance is, is worthwhile and, and could be to the benefit of all, uh, just to kind of bring the public assurance that I think is, this, any project, but this project, uh, is really had, uh, been exposed in terms of, uh, questions around, uh, the geotechnical conditions. And so I think having that extra, uh, set of eyes, uh, on, on the, uh, on the review would be, uh, I think, uh, valued and, uh, uh, I think be just good for all. So, uh, again, uh, pleased to support this.
Thanks, Consular Kebiong.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I have one point of information through you, uh, as I'm seeing this language, if I might, and it's probably, I'm guessing to legal, uh, it could be planning staff, I'm guessing legal. And it's, uh, on the last sentence versus notes to the applicant, multiple iterations of peer review may be required based on typical seminal reports and plans prior to rezoning, DP and building permit. This is the rezoning stage of the process, so if we approve this, the rezoning will have happened. So I'm wondering if that language was intentional or if there's a legal context to it, or if the word rezoning should not be there? I'm asking that question through you to staff.
Yeah.
Or legal. I see Templar.
Templar, please go ahead.
Hi, Jeff, I'm happy to jump in afterwards. Uh, Templar Santranist is Director of Rezoning, so we would interpret this as rezoning as being prior to final approval, so the enactment to the bylaws. So we would certainly, could require multiple peer reviews prior to the enactment if we need to. Um, we don't see that as being an, an issue being prior to public hearing.
Okay, so, because this is the rezon, this is the public hearing for the rezoning right now?
This is the public hearing and should council approve this, it would be approved in principle. And then the final approval happens at enactment, so we would still consider it as being something that could happen multiple times prior to enactment.
Then how would you do a peer review prior to rezoning if we're potentially, council has on the docket to prove the rezoning today?
So if, if council were to adopt this, uh, motion and add it as a recommendation or as a, as a condition of enactment, that condition needs to be satisfied prior to the final approval of the rezoning application. Uh, so we could require-
Just to clarify, I want the terminology, if I can. So when you say approval, council may give us approval, but staff may not give the enactment?
Council gives the enactment, subject to clearing these conditions. So the idea here is that we could require multiple iterations of the peer review prior to staff, uh, uh, confirming that this condition is satisfied, at which point then we would bring this, uh, back as a bylaw for council enactment.
Okay, so it's, so the implication is rezoning fulfillment, including fulfillment of conditions?
Correct.
It's not explicitly stated, but that's what the intention is?
The intent is, is that prior to, uh, council enacting this bylaw, should it be approved in principle, that there could be mul, multiple iterations of that peer review that happen prior to your enactment decision in the future?
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and legal are happy with that language then also through you, Chair? Follow up? Can I just get a clarification, a yes?
Yes, Jeff Greenberg, and yes, we're satisfied with that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right, so let's, uh, go to the vote for this amendment. So, uh, Clerk, please, uh, take our chair to the, uh, voting screen and Council, please register your vote. All right, so this amendment passed unanimously. Thank you. Moving back to the main queue, Consular, uh, Consular Maloney, you have anything else?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Consular Dominado, please go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Chair, and, um, I am going to move a direction. I've, and to council, I've circulated an updated version of what I sent you and I know the clerks will bring it on screen. And if you can move us to an amendment queue?
Yeah. I saw you there.
And, uh, uh, just in speaking to it, um, I want to acknowledge, as I said earlier, the applicant has addressed a number of, uh, questions and concerns that were raised by speakers and residents- uh, questions and concerns that were raised by speakers and residents, um, and I very much appreciate that as a councillor. Uh, we don't always have the benefit of that, um, and so I appreciate the thoroughness. Um, but it is also part of our role to consider legal considerations and so I am moving, uh, and I'm sorry for the language, should be refer this matter for debate and decision to the Standing Committee Council meeting on May seventh at nine thirty as unfinished business to be conducted in person and by electronic means and request that staff to provide legal advice on questions raised prior to consideration of the matter. Um, and so I am moving that so that as staff noted, any questions we had that we couldn't address here in council that could be done in camera and we do have a, a, a public council meeting on May sixth as well as an in-camera session May sixth, it would afford us that ability. Um, we had a similar circumstances, my colleagues know from yesterday as well, uh, and so I'm putting that forward for council's consideration.
Second by Councillor Claussen.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else on the queue, we can, oh, Councillor Carbilla.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, I, I agree fully with Councillor Domenado that it is our role to do the due diligence. I'm a little torn on this one, um, to be honest, because, um, I'm, we're hearing, and I think this is part of the, kind of the uh, crux, is that we're hearing challenges raised either in emails that are not now allowed and received the public record or comments during the public hearing that there's legal concerns, but then we're hearing that some of those legal concerns, such as an FOI request have been completed, um, in questions that council raised to the city solicitor. So I'm torn between doing the due diligence and, um, whether there is, whether the matter has been concluded or not, so I'll just contemplate that one. Um, I think it's a bit of a somewhat different situation than yesterday, but there are, I think, outstanding questions that do remain in some of council's minds, so. I don't see anybody else on the queue, I'll decide quickly. Thank you.
If, thanks, Councillor. So clerks, just inform me, inform me that legal needs some extra time to evaluate the language, maybe further refine the language. So let's take another five minutes recess. So we're gonna be back at four nineteen. Oh, Councillor Domenado?
It's just a note that I need to change language, should be refer, not defer in that, and I can, yeah, okay, let's just note that. Thank you.
I think, yes, the legals still need more time to evaluate the language, so. So continue. Uh, Councillor Domenado, you want to talk about how we draw your motion first? Hey, hey, please go ahead, Councillor Domenado. Uh, your mic. There we go.
Um, I'm moving to withdraw the amendment I circulated and I have an updated version, um, that correctly states sort of the framing that would be a council meeting following our standing committee meeting.
We need a second there for withdraw, second by Councillor Claussen. All those in favor say, yeah, this withdraw the previous motion. Okay, opposing, eh? All right, the motion carries.
And, sorry, clerk sir, will be just getting it now. I'll read it while you're pulling it up. So.
There we go.
Sorry it's taken a little while, folks. Um, it is to refer this matter for debate and decision as unfinished business to the council meeting following our standing committee meeting on May seventh, which takes place in council chambers and begins at nine thirty, uh, to be conducted in person and by electronic means, and to request staff to provide legal advice on questions that were raised, uh, prior to consideration of the matter. And so for anyone listening, that means that, uh, we will have our regular standing committee agenda and then following that meeting, whenever that ends, we will go into council, um, and we will deal with this item at that time. But that allows us to go in camera on May sixth, which is already scheduled, and to receive any legal advice at that time. And I am, I've moved it up to the seventh, just in the interest of time, recognizing that in all these matters, I recognize, um, the applicant's probably been waiting months to get to a rezoning, um, and so if we can get that advice as quickly as possible, um, and then move it to the seventh would be ideal. So that's on this floor.
Okay, thanks. We need a second for this referral amendment, second by Councillor Claussen. Uh, seeing no one, no one else on the queue, so let's vote for this referral amendment. Please register your vote, council. Mr. Frye? Hey, all right, this referral amendment passed unanimously. All right, thanks everyone. That completes, uh, item four on the agenda today. So let's move on to the item five, CD one rezoning, eight sixteen, eight sixty, West Thirteenth Avenue and twenty nine fifteen, twenty nine twenty five Willow Street. Before we begin this agenda item, if anyone believes they have a conflict of interest, now is the time to declare it. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to disclose? Hey, seeing none, the clerk will now read the application and the summary of correspondence received.
This is an application by PC Urban Thirteenth and Willow Holdings Corporation to rezone eight one six to eight six zero West Thirteenth Avenue and two nine one five to two nine two five Willow Street from RM four residential district to CD one comprehensive development district to permit the development of two twenty-one story mixed-use buildings with three hundred and fifty-four development, uh, sorry, three hundred and fifty-four rental units, of which twenty percent of the residential floor area will be below-market rental units and a private forty-nine space childcare facility. A floor space ratio of seven point four and a height of sixty-six point six meters with additional height for rooftop amenity space are proposed. The general manager of planning, urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Sixty-six pieces of correspondence in support, sixteen pieces of correspondence in opposition, and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to two P M today, Wednesday, April twenty-third.
Thank you. This is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free. One eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. There will be an opportunity for new speakers, missed speakers, to be added to the end of the registered speakers list. We have staff from planning, urban design and sustainability here to present the application. Please go ahead. We bring the presentation.
We have the live feed on.
There we go.
Good afternoon, Acting Mayor and Council. My name is Brian Wong and I'm the rezoning planner for this application for the Broadway Plan. Staff would like to note there's a yellow memo attached to this report. The memo recommends a minor amendment to the CD one bylaw as a result of the zoning and development bylaw amendments enacted on April first, which simplify the horizontal angle of daylight regulations. The site outlined in red is located on the southwest corner of Thirteenth Avenue and Willow Street. It is currently developed with six duplexes with one unit of secondary rental housing. The site is well-served by transit and amenities, with a future Oak VGH subway station six hundred meters to the north, bus service along Twelfth Avenue, and nearby bikeways and parks. This proposal is being considered under the Broadway Plan. Redevelopment anticipates a mixed-use building up to twenty stories and six point five FSR for a development containing rental and below-market units. Minor increases in height and density are also considered for the delivery of retail, service or childcare uses. The application was submitted in January of twenty twenty-four for two twenty-one story mixed-use buildings, a density of seven point four FSR and a building height of two hundred and nineteen feet. Three hundred and fifty-four rental units are proposed with twenty percent of the residential floor area at below-market rents. A private childcare facility over two levels, a privately-owned public space and parking and loading from the lane are also proposed. Shown here in green dashes is the outline of the privately-owned public space with street-level perspectives. The privately-owned public space functions to enhance the public realm and will be secured with a statutory right-of-way. This table is a comparison- This table is a comparison between the below market rental and market rental based on unit types. Shown in red dashes, this application is providing below market rents that are twenty percent below C M H C citywide average rents. Two hundred and twenty six submissions were received during the public engagement period. Support was for the childcare proposal, increased rental stock near transit and amenities and elements of the building design. Concerns were related to the height being too tall for the area, not aligned with neighborhood character, shadowing of adjacent buildings and parks, impacted views of the mountains in downtown, increased traffic congestion, safety for pedestrians and bikers, increased noise from residents, removal of trees and interference with the V G H flight path. In response, the proposal meets the form of, form of development requirements of the plan. The tower and park typology meets policy with its ground oriented open space and reduced massing, which minimizes shadowing. Conditions of approval have been added to increase the side yard setback to provide improved neighborly transition. For traffic and parking, improvements are sought that will address safety for all road users with new street lighting, sidewalks, ramps and parking signage. Thirty one new trees are proposed with the removal of trees subject to a landscape plan and Arbor's report at the development permit stage. Lastly, the C D one bylaw and rezoning conditions include provisions ensuring the buildings do not encroach into the V G H flight path. Along with three hundred and fifty four rental units and approximately seventy below market units, the expected D C L contribution is approximately four point three million dollars with a public art contribution generating a total public benefit of four point eight million dollars. In conclusion, this proposal meets the Broadway Plan and staff support this application subject to conditions. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so would the applicant team like to present the application?
Good afternoon, Counsel, thank you for having us here today, my name is Nadia Garriger from P C Urban, I'm on the development side. I'm accompanied here today by our C E O, C O O Steve Forrest, uh Court Brown and our architects Julian Legere and Laura Matera and our landscape architect, uh Jose Gonzalez. Um, we're excited to be here and present this opportunity um to be able to build over three hundred and fifty homes in a great location across from Vancouver General Hospital. Uh, I don't know if people are aware, but V G H is one of the largest employers in Vancouver, employing over twelve thousand people for the city. Um, in that regard, we've actually been working closely with Vancouver Coastal Health and they will be speaking this afternoon as well. Um, we will be building five fully accessible homes, I know it wasn't included in the application, um but we're working through that right now as part of our development permit package. Um, these are going to be homes for uh high needs individuals who have significant mobility issues and Vancouver Coastal Health has been looking for such homes to be spread out throughout Vancouver. Um, we're also working closely with our daycare provider, C F A, we're excited to build eleven thousand square feet of daycare space uh on an extended hour basis and uh C F A is also here today uh to answer any questions and also to speak. Um, all of us are here for the rest of the afternoon uh to answer any questions you may have and also thank you uh staff for your hard work on this over the last year, appreciate it.
Thank you. Are there any question from counsel to staff uh or the applicant team noting this is the only opportunity for counsel to ask questions of the applicant? There is, Counselor Kirby.
Yeah, uh, thanks Chair, I have one question with regards to the P O Ps or privately owned public space, uh, because that's something we heard uh during the Broadway Plan uh development and uh hearings from residents was clearly I think city's committed to expanding um opportunity access to plazas and green space, public space, so give us a bit of a more detail about what that looks like and if it's, that's going to be permanently open to the public. Uh, would it be shut off at all, is it open certain hours, what does that look like?
Thank you for the question, uh, David Chard, Vom Planner. Yes, so P O Ps is a, um, will be open to the public, um, uh, it should be open to the public and, um.
Twenty four seven?
I mean.
Like, uh, ungated and?
Yeah, that, the, the agreement uh will be um ironed out through the drawn permit stage. Um, but the idea is that the P O Ps is accessible for the public um uh twenty four hours a day.
Okay, um, and can you describe the sort of size, nature of the, of the envisioned space? Features?
Maybe, is that, maybe the, the?
Sure, yeah, uh, happy to direct that to the applicant.
Hello, thank you for the question, Jose Gonzales, landscape architect. Um, yeah, the public plaza sits at the corner, uh, the intersection between uh Thirteenth and uh, and Willow and uh it, it sets back into the private property, it's open twenty four seven and uh it provides open space, uh, enhanced landscaping and uh seating opportunities for the public.
Okay, so greenery, shade, seating, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, great, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Claussen?
Uh, thanks very much Chair, just want to zero in with the applicant just with regards to the childcare and I think plenty of representative from C F A here. Uh, but um I think uh it was mentioned something about the relaxed hours, uh, um, is, is, can we expand upon that a little bit just for, for uh the sake of the public and talking about what that would mean potentially for, for people employed at the hospital or in the area?
Thank you for the question, um, we are working with C F on this and they can speak more to it as well. Uh, they have not had a twenty four hour offering yet, but it's something they'd look at, like to look at in this space, just because it is across from the hospital. Uh, a lot of people are working uh shift hours and at nighttime. So at a minimum, they'd like to be able to offer extended hours, they are looking into twenty four hour daycare and it would be the first in B C.
Okay, thanks, that's my main question I wanted to ask about, thank you very much.
Thanks Counselor, uh, so I have a question for applicant as well, yeah. Very quick question, so is workforce housing being considered for the, the hospital?
Uh, yeah, we're working with Vancouver Coastal Health, um, so that they do have access to the homes, uh, to the below market and to the market homes as well, uh, that's why we have been speaking to them extensively just to see what their needs are. Uh, we understand a lot of people are not able to live close to the hospital who work there, uh, same with first responders, so that's why we're working closely with them right now.
So how does that uh look, looks like operationally, like the first round of reviews or what, what does that uh?
We're working through that right now with Vancouver Coastal Health.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that's all my question, all right, this is the second call for speakers, if there are any speakers uh for this item who wish to speak to counsel, please uh call toll free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We will now hear from the public, any registered speaker in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speakers will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Our first registered speaker has withdrawn. Our second registered speaker is Bonnie Wilson, is Bonnie online?
Yes, I'm here, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you Bonnie, so before you start, as a procedure question, can I ask you if you are resident of Vancouver?
No, I'm not a resident of Vancouver.
No problem, please go ahead, you have five minutes.
Right, okay, good afternoon Acting Mayor and Counsel, my name is Bonnie Wilson and I'm the Vice President of Vancouver Community Services for Vancouver Coastal Health. I appreciate the opportunity to address counsel this evening and have called in to offer some comments in support of the application. As you've heard, Vancouver Coastal Health is one of the province's um health authorities and we epidemic excellence for healthcare for the, the local area, for the nation, for global health ecosystem. We specialize in care for patients in the region and throughout the province. Our vision in Vancouver Coastal Health is healthy lives and healthy communities and we aim to provide an exceptional care experience for the more than one point two five million people in our region. To deliver these services, we have more than thirty five thousand staff, medical professionals and researchers. The moderate income homes proposed at this site are essential to many of our staff and having new homes within walking distance of V G H will be extremely desirable. In addition to the housing offer, offered, the inclusion of new large daycare with a much needed, uh, is a much needed asset for our workers, allowing for access to secure flexible childcare within blocks of the hospital. As noted by the applicant, V C H is in discussion with P C Urban about the housing needs of our employees and generally improve, improving access to housing and childcare near employment hubs like V G H. As one of the larger employers in the region, we feel it's important to see more housing built around the hospital to support our growing workforce and we're here to advocate in favor of this project. Put it in perspective, there are approximately twelve thousand people who work at V G H campus alone and over five thousand additional V C H staff who work in community sites around the city of Vancouver. That's seventeen thousand essential healthcare workers providing critical services to this city. We've signed a letter of intent with P C Urban that indicates that they will provide the following. They'll grant V C H employees priority access to below market homes. They'll arrange priority access to childcare spaces for V C H staff, medical staff through the childcare operator and they'll build and allocate five accessible suites to V C H for individuals with high personal care needs in accordance with accessibility guidelines. In addition to that, they'll advocate one seat within the site, which will be leased by V C H for staff who will use that site to provide care for the high needs individuals in the accessible suites. This development should be approved uh this afternoon and it will deliver significant benefits to V C H and the broader community by delivering new secured rental housing and a significant contribution of childcare spaces. Again, on behalf of V C H, I wish to express our strong support for this proposal, thank you for considering our perspective.
Yeah, thank you Bonnie, so I think you have one question, so Counselor Claussen?
Thanks Chair, a really uh quick question and congratulations uh, uh Bonnie on becoming the, the new Vice President of Community Services for Coastal Health. I just wanted to ask just a basic question, when it comes to housing for people working at the, at the health authority, um, how important would um the availability of housing factor into retention of, of staff?
Thanks so much for the question Counselor and for the congratulations, um, uh, having housing near our employment hubs is, is really critical. That is one of the things that we hear from our staff, that is a barrier. Um, we do have many staff who travel um from outside of Vancouver for work and um we have heard that, you know, at times the, the commute is um, becomes too much. Um, some are driving, which again has environmental impacts and some are taking transit and just the impact on them, their lives and their families is pretty, pretty substantial, so we do feel that having housing in close proximity to V G H as well as the community services is quite crucial.
Thanks very much.
Thank you Bonnie, that's all your question, thank you, thank you for speaking to.
Thank you.
All right, the next speaker is Heather Kennedy, in person, yeah. Please go ahead, five minutes.
Oh, good afternoon, uh, councilors and city staff, uh, my name is Heather Kennedy, um, I'm a private citizen and I have lived at eight thirty eight West Fourteenth Avenue since nineteen ninety seven, so I do have a longstanding knowledge of the area where this development is proposed. I am in opposition to the proposal. Um, for context, I am in favor of more people moving into our west side district, especially when they add age, economic and cultural diversity to existing neighborhoods. I'm here to speak about my concerns uh for this, this specific project and to make the case that it goes against reasonable planning goals and principles in this location. I have two broad areas of concern. First, that two twenty one story towers will have a direct negative impact on the existing street level neighborliness of this low to mid rise enclave. If you look around at the adjacent structures for a two block radius, ninety five percent of them are two stories high at most, there is one six story complex across the street just being completed and another uh ten story complex at Heather and Twelfth. They're obviously much lower than these proposed towers and they're examples of a compromise approach that increases density while supporting existing street level life. Currently, neighbors walk in the area, they talk to each other. Traffic flow is steadily increasing, given proximity to the hospital and the existing daycare center, but at current levels, pedestrians and cyclists are relatively safe in this entirely residential enclave with no commercial properties. Adding one hundred and eighty parking stalls to this uh block is, will propose, will pose an unacceptable level of risk to them. And reminder that it is four blocks away from the upcoming Oak Street Rapid Transit Station at Laurel. So many residents, tower residents will choose to drive instead of taking transit if they keep a car in one of those stalls, plus hundreds of visitors, commercial and personal visitors who will come to the towers every day. Um, I'm in favor of tall towers where they make sense in proximity to other towers in already highly densified areas such as the West End or beside arterial and transit routes, for example, on Twelfth Avenue and on Broadway itself. They have multiple traffic lanes to absorb the higher traffic flow, but the area at Thirteenth and Willow is none, between Willow and Laurel is none of these things. My second concern is that the scope of this project will have a destabilizing impact on the immediate area and it will become a trigger for property speculation. If this development is approved, it will be a signal to other developers to try and acquire the properties immediately surrounding it. Broadway Plan does allow currently for more towers and development on immediately adjacent streets. We will see more profit speculation, land banking, flipping, land inflation in the heart of a low to mid rise area, emphasis on low. Neighbors turn against neighbors when a land assembly proposal divides them on whether to accept a purchase or hold out. And I would refer counsel to the letter you received on December ninth, two thousand and twenty four from a large and respected group of experienced city planners and architects who know this region well. They described this threat of speculation more precisely and eloquently than I can do in this limited time. So, in short, what do you do if you accept this model of tower development? Um, that it's not the right fit for this location, but the goal remains to bring more people into the neighborhood in rental units that are affordable to more than upper income tenants. I uh encourage you, I urge you to refocus on a goal of building lower while also building smarter in locations like this one, where increased density can be achieved with lower height rental developments. Structures in this six to ten story range can be designed to accommodate many more people than now live in this neighborhood. There are plenty of examples of mid height structures that can make financial sense by using innovative materials and progressive designs. They'll maximize space and create more density while being a better fit with their surroundings. Um, a sidebar, I've worked in the cultural sector for a very long time and when I look at an eighty twenty uh market versus below market split for the unit, I really question whether this is going far enough to support those people who are low income, seniors, fixed incomes, people just entering the workforce um and who now are leaving the cultural sector and in many cases leaving the city. And enclosure, I just restate my core objections, it, it, it's the out of sync height of this proposal that is not the right fit for this location. It will destabilize the neighborhood's neighborliness and um have a disabling, destabilizing impact as it triggers property speculation and that will materially damage the community culture in this neighborhood. And with that, I trust that my comments will be of some use and I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you Heather, uh, Counselor Kirby, you're on the queue.
Uh, yeah, I just have a procedure, I just wanted to, um, for council's consideration move that we um can extend past five o'clock to hear uh all speakers on this item uh and then take, I'm going to propose since we started later, a shorter dinner break of half an hour at that time and then come back after the break for debate and decision on the item.
Okay, so we have motion on the floor to finish all the speakers on this item and then take yes, yeah, but we're finishing the speaker for item five and take thirty minutes break and then come back for item uh, item five for debate and decision. Okay, so the motion will see that we have to complete the agenda after coming back.
Uh, I did say that, I said that we would come back after and have debate and decision after the break and I would recommend a half hour break, but we would just complete speakers and debate and decision after we return from the break.
Okay, so we have motion here, second by Counselor Dominado, all those in favor say yeah, opposing A. Okay, the motion carries, so let's continue with all the speakers for this item. Uh, speaker number four is Martha Alicia Lankard. Okay, so can we clarify, Martha, you are, are you the speaker number twelve as well?
I had signed and they had told me first four, but then I added three more people so I could get eight minutes, and they gave me number 12. So I could speak either way now, or-
Yes, you can speak now, but you can only speak once?
Yes.
To speak as a group, you have to identify other representatives with your group?
Yes.
Okay, do you have the representative now?
The representative, one is in person, and there is two on the phone.
Okay, so please, can you identify themselves as a procedure?
I'm sorry?
Can you identify all the, all the speakers in your group?
Can I name them?
Yes.
Yes, that's the start of my presentation, but I want to ask a question before you start the clock?
Not yet, not yet.
Am I able, is it possible to ask a question before you start the clock?
No, you can ask questions.
I cannot ask questions.
But, but you have to identify all the people in your groups as a procedure question. Okay, both of them on the phone. Can you introduce them so we can note their, note their names, so you can speak as a group?
Good afternoon. I'm speaking on behalf of Laura Barnes, Joanne Carlton, and Whitney-
Okay, so we have to confirm their attendance in the, in the council chamber or online? One? Okay, we need two more?
They're on the phone.
Okay, can you identify themselves? They need to be identified, right?
They were asked to be on the phone at the time of my speaking.
Do they need to introduce the-
(noise)
Yeah, we need to confirm their attendance.
Oh, I'm online, I'm trying.
Okay, so one, and the other?
My, my name is Jo- My name is Joanne Carlton.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. And there's one more, can you identify yourself?
Yes, my name's Whitney Crowell.
Okay, thank you. Now we have everyone. So Martha, please go ahead. We have identified everyone in your group, you have eight minutes as a representative for the group.
Okay, thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of those three people I've just got introduced. My name is Alicia Blanca, I'm an environmental engineer, retired. I am bringing today some comments about the development intended, the two towers at West 13. I am quite shocked that the city of Vancouver has not done any cumulative studies of the Broadway plan or provided more guidance to developers. I think this speaks to the previous speaker concerns and more concerns that I'm going to outline for you. The community consultation to date has amounted to, we hear you, but we don't really have taken that into account. I hope you prove me wrong after this presentation. The land going to developers for expensive rentals of minuscule apartments is feeding investor syndicates to park their wealth in real estate. I am never, it will never solve the housing crisis we need, non-for-profit, co-op, and low-income family housing. I'm speaking against the proposal, the two 21-story towers that are naked, they have no four-story apron, which is required in residential areas. This residential development sits outside the 400 circle around existing and future rapid transit. It's a residential area designated purple in your Broadway plan. The towers proposed are to be built in one-third portion of the block face. I'm using here your, speaking your plan, and they remove all possible future development of the rest of the block, as they exceed the original limit of two towers per block face of the Broadway plan, and even at the density if you calculate it, they exceed the relaxed limit of three towers per block face. Two towers in one-third of the site is a density of six towers per block face. The two towers do not meet the minimum 45.7-meter frontage and tower spacing of 24.4 meters and minimum setback of half the spacing or 12.2 meters that are required by yourselves. The frontage land should be 128 meters and is only 97. This means the proposed rezoning should immediately be rejected. It should not have been allowed to proceed to this stage by city staff, as the site is not large enough for the intended development. The site as assembled, in fact, can only accommodate one tower. Of all the proposed projects in the neighborhood, this one is one of the worst. The site size and spacing requirements means jamming the two concrete towers in one-third of a block with no apron to soften the transition with no tree vegetation buffer that will be required to isolate the next properties around from the impacts of this tower building. You would need at least 12 to 18 meters to the next building, so you don't deny solar access to the adjacent Strata Building and to the daycare kitchen general, which is across the street. The pod will be now impermanent. They also, the towers as designed with the balconies, have a direct sideline to the adjacent side users. It's a cross-architectural proposal that doesn't account for the neighbors. The rendering provided is deceptive. It does not show the towers in the context of the smaller scale dwellings and how one tower will abut and overwhelm the four-story Strata at 888, depriving the dwellers from light and being in direct sideline destroying privacy and peace. Resonance should be denied for these reasons as well. We are directly affected as neighbors to the West and impersonally six meters away from a concrete tower, with 21 balconies looking over my outdoor space and inside my apartment. I am appalled at the expected noise, sun shading, and traffic that will come with the development. The impact of the quality of life will be enormous. The risk to the integrity of our modest four-story building with parkade from the excavation of two level parking and foundations for huge towers is terrifying. Direct across the street is the underground power station, a three-story underground cavity that serves the hospital. Soil lateral lodgings and the potential for liquefaction of soil displacement due to loss during an earthquake will bring a disaster. High rises should not be permitted across the street. Two towers squeezing a third of a city block with no buffer or consideration to the neighbors is damaging not just for us, but for the community. In the near future, we will have children playing in, in the condo lobby because we don't have enough park or play space in the outside. That is not a future we want. We cannot support more density while we are lacking green and public spaces and services. Your filing to take into account the cumulative effects of the building in the neighborhood that has, over time, brought more and more people into the neighborhood while maintaining the same park and the same community centers. Your council job extends beyond police and construction permits and includes addressing the needs of education, environment, recreation, and sport. My opposition to tower development is based on privacy, ecology, aesthetics, density, housing types, services, and amenities. Let me explain. I have lived next to the proposed development for 30 years. I have seen the gradual increase in density in the area, mostly four- to six-story buildings, including a CHMC new low-income housing built on the next block, right on 13. It's a good addition to the neighborhood, replacing the rundown townhomes and providing affordable family housing. The second new building is only now nearing completion. Those families and children need outlets for recreation, fitness, and cultural opportunities. None are planned. The proposed towers are the wrong type of development, expensive rentals of tiny boxes. They will disrupt the neighborhood character and change the street-level experience. They will remove 52 mature trees in the area already having low tree density and quickly becoming an urban heat island. This is unacceptable. Climate change is bringing heat waves that kill people, a massive concrete tower radiates heat at night in a neighborhood with little, no air conditioning, and few green spaces and trees. When the hospital tower was built, we were promised a green space, a park that never materialized. The increase in density in two blocks, so 851 units meets 2,500 people in the area, and it clearly exceeds the amenities capacity of the neighborhood. We have no library, tiny recreational facilities at Douglas Park. In 30 years, the city of Vancouver has not added fields, a pool, a library, or a bigger community center to serve the growing population. We are bursting at the seams. We have four daycares within four blocks, so the proposed daycare is really not a complete solution for the neighborhood. If you want youth that has no artistic, cultural outlets, you will end up with higher numbers of bored children and youth and higher delinquency and mischief. We would like the city to buy the land on some of the $860 million surplus that they have and develop a library, a swimming pool, a rooftop garden, things that are more desirable for this community. Our community is friendly with medium-density, lean-catch house additions, and all kinds of integrated housing, market, low-income, and supportive. Many people that work at the hospital already live in the neighborhood. Without green spaces, you are reducing quality of life for all of us. I'm urging the councillors to hear me to vote against this development. It is violating the planning size and density requirements of the Broadway plan. It will destroy our quality of life and preclude future development for the rest of the owners of the block. Even one tower would not serve the potential dwellers without prior investments in culture and recreation.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking to council as a group. All right, so the next speaker is speaker number five, Peter Walkerch.
Oh, hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead, Peter.
Great, thank you. So my name is Peter Walkerch, and I'm here to support this building. Now, first of all, I just want to emphasize what a great project this is. 354 rental homes close to VGH, replacing duplexes, not an existing rental apartment. It's got daycare, and I just want to say for a moment about the daycare. I know council has asked staff to sort of work on this city's critical shortage of daycare, but nothing has really changed. It's still extremely difficult, from everything I've heard, to build new daycare in this city. So there certainly haven't been any results of what council's been trying to do there. And, you know, I think results are what politicians get judged on, and the daycare shortage is still a very serious problem in Vancouver. So anyways, this proposal helps, and that is awesome. I want to add, one of the, you guys may remember, I sometimes go in to support housing in the city, but I am actually a close neighbor to this building. I live just about two blocks away from this, which, so I'm proud to be able to support this in my neighborhood, but I also say that shouldn't matter. Our housing operates as a system, and when we don't build housing in one neighborhood, it just increases pressure elsewhere. We can't keep on doing that, we need to think of housing as a system, not as this sort of hyper-local sort of thing, that's just not how the housing system works. And, you know, on that note, I was close enough to get one of those cards in the mail about this building. And, you know, staff always starts off with these presentations with saying things like, oh, 12 people supported it, 10 opposed it, but I hope you realize that's not really an accurate description about what's going on. How many of these cards were sent out? I'm guessing hundreds. What's the response rate? 1%? 2%? The reality is that most people don't care about these elaborate consultations that the city has built up. They just want the city to have a functional and affordable housing system, and the city's processes seem designed to encourage opposition and create veto points, the opportunity to spread this, you know, confusion about housing. You know, the entire idea of having these elaborate bespoke consultation processes on individual buildings is really quite ridiculous. And I'll note that this was originally on the agenda for over a week ago, but you weren't able to get through your agenda for these public hearing at your last meeting, so here we are, two hours after the start of today's meeting. I mean, this is a pretty sorry state of governance and housing approvals for the, for the city. And so if you wanted to design a system to produce a housing shortage, it would look a lot like this. So just to wrap this up, I'll say this is the sort of housing we need. More density in areas where there wasn't much density before, that's not a problem, that's a good thing, because that minimizes renter displacement and it increases geographic equity. So the context that matters isn't the height of the buildings, you know, the next door to it that were built 50 years ago or something like that. The context that matters is the housing need of today and tomorrow. The context that matters is the city's chronically and critically low 1% vacancy rate, which drives up rents every year, and it's just one of the symptoms of our severe shortage of housing. The context that matters is the proximity to transit, to jobs, and to VGH. And so I can say, as a neighbor, I am extremely excited to support this, and I welcome my future neighbors to this wonderful neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Speaker number six is Diane Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and councillors. Many of my points have already been made, but I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Dr. Diane Miller. I'm actually one of the owners in this land assembly, but that's not why I wanted to speak here. In fact, I've lived in the neighborhood for over 35 years, and I live in one of the duplexes, and I was blessed to have the same neighbor who's lived in the duplex for 36 years. I had no intention of moving out of the neighborhood, but I did work at Vancouver General and B.C. Cancer for 32 years. And what it left me with is, and I was very fortunate, because I was able to just literally get up in the morning, roll out of bed, and be at work within 10 minutes. Really important for quality of life. We've already heard that there's 36,000 employees of Vancouver Coastal, there's probably another 5,000 at B.C. Cancer, there's B.C. CDC, and a lot of my friends who work at Children's and Women's want to live in this neighborhood. Colleagues that I've had talk about driving past many other healthcare facilities on their way to get to VGH, and many of them end up working in Delta, in Richmond, in Burnaby because of the big commute. For the environment, for people being able to live where their work is, I think it's an important development. For me personally, I don't want to move out of this neighborhood, I like this neighborhood, or I wouldn't have been here for 35 years. So I'm going to quit there, because I think everything else I was going to say has already been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number seven is Lewis in Vegas. Lewis, not here, not here, okay. Speaker number eight has withdrawn. Speaker number nine is Dennis Agar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead.
Awesome, thank you so much. I think a lot of you know me, my name is Dennis Agar, I live in Coal Harbour, I'm an urban planner slash community organizer about some public transit stuff. I am not going to say anything new, I think you've already heard from so many people. I'm just here to say that I love this project. It's zero displacement, it is creating a 24-hour daycare in a neighborhood with so many healthcare workers that desperately need it, and this is the kind of project that should be approved without the need to go to council meetings. I think that's the step that we need to take to really supercharge the kinds of housing supply that we need in this region, especially in cases like this where there are no renters affected. So hugely in support of this project, and just to be respectful of your time, I'm going to leave it there, so thank you all so much.
Thank you. Speaker number 10 is Devon Husek.
Good evening, Chair Zhao and members of City Council. Could be good night or good morning, the way meetings seem to be dragging on lately. My name is Devon Husek, I'm a resident of Vancouver, and I'm here to support this proposal as I believe it will positively contribute to and blend into the fabric of my community. I want to quickly apologize to you, to those of you who know there's a 10-floor Strata Building named the tapestry just a block to the east of the site. I'm guessing I'm going to be a dad soon, and my jokes are getting progressively worse as that due date nears. To be honest, I'd be more surprised if the tapestry actually stood out to any of you, even though you may have gone past it on your way here tonight. With the dense tree coverage along the blocks in the area, it's hard to see just how tall the buildings actually are, and from a distance, the Patterson Pavilion towers above everything else. In fact, today, at 3 o'clock, there is an urban design panel review for two buildings at Ash and, Ash and Oak and 12th Avenue that are actually 100 feet, 150 feet taller than these towers. So even if they get approved, the Patterson Pavilion will be the pinnacle of Fairview Skyline, and at best, these towers will look like mere steps to it. For that reason, I think these buildings should have actually been allowed to be taller with a higher FSR limit, so they could have provided more homes here. With VGH already in their way, they're not impacting any public or private views, and no one will notice their shadows on the plaza by the steam plant, as it's already covered by tall trees and the adjacent parkade. I'm not sure what we're gaining as a city by foregoing the opportunity to create more homes here, because I can't see any benefit in repeating Metro Vancouver's past mistakes. Don't get me wrong, their header place social housing development that's across the street from this property is turning out beautifully. Frankly, it should be, since it's been well over a decade since that rezoning application was first submitted in 2014, and they're not even finished the second of its three phases. Still, even today, I don't think anyone can look at that pair of six-floor and four-floor buildings, I guess there's a couple people, and feel anything other than remorse at a wasted opportunity to provide more homes on government-owned land. After all, what more perfect place could there be to provide housing than on the doorstep of Canada's second-largest hospital? What better way to address our city's shortage of healthcare professionals? I grew up in Chilliwack. I grew up in Chilliwack. I can tell you that commuting over our region's waterways isn't fun. I'm sure councillor Montague would back me up on this. Why would a doctor, nurse, or any specialist endure that when they can easily find a job at Royal Colombians or Memorial or Lionsgate? A few years, a few years ago, we called those people heroes. Quickly, we forget. Why not let them be able to take a short walk to work rather than spending as stressful speeding- Why not let them be able to take a short walk to work rather than spending a stressful speeding drive after getting a late-night emergency page to save a life? I think that would probably result in a lot fewer cars on the road too. I'll admit, some of these individuals may already be able to afford the single-family homes this proposal will replace, but that ignores the need of the support teams who keep our healthcare system running. Custodians, administrators, office assistants, all the others who deserve our respect too. And on a single income, some in those positions can struggle to find a place in Vancouver. With the below-market homes these buildings offer, even a Starbucks barista who keeps our surgeons awake at night can make a living, a life here. Yet the nature of shift work means that even if you're lucky to live in a, to live in this neighborhood, you're probably still going to struggle to find childcare. I imagine if we, this meeting was a little later today, we'd probably hear a lot more supportive speakers too. I know people who have started calling daycare to, with, to find a daycare with openings weeks before their due date and struggled to land a spot until weeks after their baby came home. To say the center will be a cherished amenity, and a care center will be a cherished amenity is an understatement, especially considering it allows someone working a late-night shift to have a secure, safe place to leave their child overnight. I think it's actually the first overnight daycare in our city, but I could be wrong. That's the perfect coupling for a hospital, though I imagine some of your staff might appreciate that after these late nights recently. Maybe you would yourselves. It's also a great fit with the Child, uh, Childhood Development Centre across West Thirteenth Avenue. And I think the city could take action, be a bit more bolder to make this a true match made in heaven. Or whatever you, term you feel is appropriate to describe these rather warm chambers some days. The Broadway Public Realm Plan will create a lot of new public space, but I think it's a missed opportunity here. Imagine the benefit if this block of West Thirteenth Avenue was close to traffic, providing a seamless connection between this child, between these two child-dominated spaces. Imagine having more room in the Energy Centre Plaza. All this sounds too good to pass up to me, much like this application itself. I'll admit, sitting here, hearing people describe this as a disaster that will damage the community shocks me. It hurts me, to be honest. I've resided in Vancouver for fifteen years now. I've watched my home price nearly double. It's not buildings like this that will allow my daughter to live, one day live in Vancouver that are harming our community. It's the stagnation that's killing it. I've seen my friends leave. I want that to stop. So with that said, I ask you to support this proposal tonight, not because it'll benefit me. I'm a homeowner. My daughter won't arrive in time for the daycare. The building won't arrive for her. But maybe they'll let her have a home here one day. For that reason, please support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Devon. Speaker number eleven is Alison Silgardo.
Hello?
Yeah, hi Alison. Yeah, uh, before you start, can I ask you if you are residents of Vancouver?
Uh, no, I'm not a resident of Vancouver.
Okay, no problem. Please go ahead. You have five minutes.
Good evening, acting mayor, council members. My name, as you said, is Alison Silgardo and I'm the CEO of Seniors Services Society of B C, a community-based agency that supports seniors who are homeless or at risk of homelessness in Vancouver and across B C. I am calling in to this public, uh, evening's public hearing to support B C Urban's proposal to build rental and below-market housing across from Vancouver General Hospital. As every one of us online or in the room today is a senior or a senior in training, having housing like this in close proximity to medical services would allow seniors to be more independent and age-in place. The proposed units would offer seniors the opportunity, those who choose to downsize while being close to services. The site's location across from Vancouver General Hospital is also in close proximity to public transportation amenities and services that make the homes in this development a great option for seniors who do not want to drive, should not drive, or do not have access to a vehicle. Seniors intersect with health in a really close way from the work we do. Take two critical illnesses like kidney dialysis that requires weekly and sometimes more frequent treatments or cancer treatments. We know that eighty-eight percent of all new cancer diagnoses and ninety-five percent of all cancer deaths occur with Canadians, uh, over fifty. Taking travel to medical services off the table for somebody battling these conditions is a huge factor in their wellness and mental wellness. Also being able to get their treatments without having to depend on family or support enables them to be a bit more independent when they're losing control in so many other areas. Many seniors have ongoing health issues that require frequent doctors' visits, lab work or treatments. Proximity to a hospital can reduce travel stress and make scheduling easier. Just being close to a hospital can lower anxiety about their potential health crisis. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in and I do hope council will advance this application through the development permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Uh, speaker twelve has spoken previously already as a group. Speaker thirteen is Joshua Burditt.
Good day, sir.
Yeah, we can hear you, Joshua. Please go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Um, good evening, uh, acting mayor, council. I'm, uh, speaking in support of the, uh, project and I am a resident of Vancouver. I thank you for the, uh, opportunity to speak. Uh, personally, I'm, I'm happy to see more rental housing coming to, uh, to this area. I've been, uh, resident of the, uh, uh, former Balfour Townhome site for thirty-one years now and am, uh, preparing to relocate as that has been, uh, redeveloped. Uh, in my view, uh, projects like this one, which, uh, deliver housing, particularly the, uh, below-market for, uh, sort of more moderate income earners, uh, are, uh, of course important. But, uh, as well as the, uh, the childcare, I don't have kids myself, but I know people who do and I know it's, I know it's a struggle. So to me, it, it makes sense to add, uh, these sorts of projects close to employers like VGH, close to, uh, close to transit and so forth. Uh, you know, things, things like that can only, uh, serve, I think, to improve affordability, uh, in my case. Uh, though I'm speaking here as just a private citizen, uh, I'm a member of the, uh, the naval reserve and I just, uh, just qualified as a social worker as well, though I, uh, not currently practicing. But, um, no, I, I work in Vancouver. My, my wages are good, but they're a matter of public record. But as I look for, uh, affordable housing in Vancouver, it's, it's hard to come by, which means either spend more of my, uh, spend more of my earnings on, uh, on housing or spend more of my life in the car. Projects like this, uh, I hope if they, if they go through, uh, will help, uh, people in, in my position and similar positions later on, uh, hopefully not have to make that sorts of, those sorts of choices. So, uh, yes, I, I, I do very much support the, uh, support the project. Uh, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Speaker fourteen is Brad Wong. Are you online, Brad?
Hello?
Yeah, please go ahead, Brad.
Uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Alright, uh, hello, council. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to comment on P C Urban's application. Um, as you mentioned, my name is Brad Wong. I am not a resident of Vancouver. However, I work in and regularly commute to Vancouver on a near daily basis. I am in support of this project. I'm happy to see more rental housing coming forward, especially in the Broadway corridor where it makes the most sense. Close to hospitals, jobs, services and of course, the new subway line. This may sound similar to what the naval reservist before me said, but I am also a CAF member that works regularly in Vancouver. Uh, due to pricing, I cannot live here. However, I like to call it my home. I can see how this project would benefit other members and first responders that rely on Vancouver for their livelihood. I have seen so many of my colleagues commuting from neighboring cities like Oquitlam, White Rock and even Chilliwack. For myself, commuting from Richmond, I, I feel lucky. Additionally, as a CAF member, my hours do not always follow a regular Monday to Friday, nine-to-five schedule. Having access to a twenty-four-hour daycare would be invaluable for those shifts where I'm away from home for days at a time. In my view, projects like this, which deliver rental housing and childcare, need to be fast-tracked because we desperately need both of these things. From a city planning perspective, it makes sense to add higher-density buildings in and around the new Broadway subway line, which will improve access and affordability. I hope you will allow this project to move ahead up, uh, to permitting and construction. Thank you for your time, council.
Thank you. Uh, speaker fifteen is Karen Conrad.
Good afternoon. My name is Karen Conrad and I'm opposed to this, um, project as designed, not opposed at all to the density improvement. I'm the strata president of eight-eight-eight West Thirteenth Avenue, a four-story building immediate east of the proposed plan. Uh, this proposal for the site does not consider the location, surroundings or neighborhood as designed, nor does it consider as residents, we have the right to privacy and the comfort in our own units as immediate neighbors to this site. We need your support as our elected officials to recognize and address the devastating effects this proposal as designed will have on our building. The renderings within the proposal conspicuously leave out any images of context in the reality of this site as it sits in relation to the remainder of the block. There are several aspects of this proposal that require redesign to meet B C provincial housing legislation, the site context and fundamental long-term planning objectives. The following aspects specifically require revision. Bill forty-seven requires the city to allow new high-density buildings with a minimum building height of eight stories in the area of the city. The west side yard setback must be increased to reflect at least half the typical required tower separation of twenty-four meters to preserve the redevelopment potential of the adjacent sites to the west. Bill forty-seven obligates the city to protect the redevelopment potential for the remainder of the block, which this proposal does not accomplish. The Vancouver Heritage Plan was approved by City Council in twenty-twenty and supports the use of density transfers to protect heritage assets through redevelopment. The existing building at eight-nine-six West Thirteenth Avenue is identified heritage resource. Preserving the redevelopment potential of the remaining block requires the site plan reflect potential for building, a building much taller than eight stories to be constructed on eight-eight-eight West Thirteenth as part of a comprehensive redevelopment that involves the retention of the heritage building. The developer must be required to provide a development concept plan for the site to the west, demonstrating this project does not impose restrictions on the potential redevelopment of the remainder of the block. Any intention in the Broadway Plan to restrict the number of towers per block is no longer relevant as the plan is superseded by Bill forty-seven. Preserving the long-term redevelopment of the block requires that a minimum of twelve-meter setback to the west property line is provided. The parking garage driveway must be moved to the east. The proposed driveway location is approximately three meters east of the existing driveway to eight-eight-eight West Thirteenth Avenue. This minimal driveway separation will create dangerous turning motion, uh, movement conflicts between the exiting vehicles in these driveways. Likewise, the traffic noise and vibration created by the increased traffic will be untenable. This area also contains our garbage and recycling area, which again will cause issues with trucks trying to pick up those pieces. The six spaces proposed off the lane for pickup and drop-off is not sufficient to support the childcare operations. West Thirteenth is already congested in the mornings and afternoon with numerous vehicles illegally parking in the vehicle travel lanes while children are being dropped off in existing daycare across the street at eight-eight, eight-eight-nine West Thirteenth Avenue. So the addition of approximately fifty more childcare spaces will result in further illegal parking that is already prevalent, often creating dangerous situations on the roadway. In addition, the above outlined concern, to the above outlined concerns, the developer must be required to ensure that construction-related activities do not impact the existing residents', use of our property or the structural integrity of our building. To this effect, the developer should be required to do the following. Conduct a pre-construction assessment documenting the condition of our building prior to any construction and demolition activity. Installing a geotechnical monitoring equipment on and around our building and conducting post-construction impact assessment to ensure there's been no damage to our building resulting from construction activity as per the developer's responsibility. Putting these measures in place is required to ensure accountability. They should be preparing and implementing a comprehensive plan to manage construction-related dust and debris during and post, um, excuse me, post-construction. Prepare and implement comprehensive, comprehensive construction traffic management plan to manage employee parking and construction-related deliveries, especially considering the existing daycare operation across the street at eight-eight-nine West Thirteenth Avenue and existing on-street resident permit parking in the area of Thirteenth Avenue. This area is already subject to high on-street parking demand due to the proximity to the hospital and there's limited resident permit parking in the area. As it stands, the density of this project is being increased due to the inclusion of below-market rental units. The proposed tower in the park typology with three levels of underground parking is the most expensive form of construction possible, which will require the developer to charge commensurate market rental rates to recoup their investment, with only seventy of the units actually being assigned to affordable rental prices. Those units will be studio and one-bedroom sizes. Council, I ask you to support us and obliged to protect us, uh, at eight-eight-eight West Thirteenth. The west side yard setback must be increased and the design must reflect a minimum twelve-meter setback. The driveway must be moved to the east in order to maintain a reasonable flow.
Sorry, Karen, you are at time. But thank you for speaking to council.
Thanks for caring about people that actually live in the neighborhood.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, so this is the third and the final call for speakers. If, uh, there are any speakers, uh, for this item who wish to speak to council, please, uh, call toll-free, one eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, followed by the participant code, one zero six, one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are any additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. Okay, seeing that, we will, we will now take a five-minute recess for any additional speakers to call in. Uh, as what we decide, we're going to take thirty minutes. Okay, I'm done thirty minutes. Okay, sure, we're going to take five minutes break, so we're going to be back at five-thirty-three for any additional speakers. Thank you. So clerk, do we have any additional speakers online or in person? One online, okay. Alright, so we're gonna go with Rebecca Hartley in person. Please go ahead Rebecca. Before you start, as a procedure question Rebecca, can I ask you if you are a resident of Vancouver?
Oh yeah, I'm a resident of Vancouver.
Perfect, thank you, please go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon Chairperson and City Council. My name is Rebecca Hartley, I'm a resident of Vancouver and I'm here today to provide my support to the West Thirteenth Avenue and Willow Street proposal. I'd actually been speaker number eight at the other day when it was up, but I'd withdrawn as I didn't expect to be able to speak tonight since I was working until five P M. Um, there are many reasons that I support this proposal, but the largest is the daycare that will be included here. Not only will it offer care for forty-nine children during the day, it also has sixteen overnight childcare spaces available as well. It means more shift workers, which help keep our city and healthcare systems running, will have some flexibility and peace of mind when going back to work. Split over two levels, the facility has access to lots of natural light, while the outdoor play area is thoughtfully designed so children can enjoy plenty of direct sunlight as they explore and play with friends. As someone who has called Fairview Home for the last fourteen years, I'm glad this proposal will allow three hundred and fifty-four more secured rental homes with twenty percent below-market rates to become my neighbors. It means more people can live a short walk to the existing seventeen-nine and ninety-nine bus routes and the soon-to-be completed Oak V G H Skytrain station for a quick trip downtown or to the Broadway Business Corridor. Given this and how walkable and bikeable the neighborhood is, I don't have any concerns about the amount of parking provided, except that it might be too much and will just go unused. In terms of design, the building fits with what I would expect to see under the Broadway Plan. The surrounding context of V G H and its support facilities along with Heather Place means it really blends into the neighborhood. Given this, I hope you'll join me in support of this application. Thank you.
Thank you Rebecca. Uh, the next speaker is Paul Dean on the line.
Hi, good afternoon, Chief Mayor and Council. Yes, my name is Paul Dean and I'm Vice President of Business Development and Real Estate with C F A Early Learning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in total support of this proposal. We're very encouraged by the plan for this development, not only because it adds much-needed rental housing, but because it includes a proposed purpose-built C F A early learning school that will serve approximately one hundred children. Opportunities such as this are unfortunately few and far between in the city of Vancouver. Most of you may be familiar with C F A and its reputation, so I won't dwell on the system and its methodology. However, in short, at C F A, our focus is on premium early childhood education. We're not a daycare. We offer a full early learning curriculum that blends academics, creative arts, physical development and emotional learning, all delivered through a self-paced approach. Our goal is to help children thrive in those foundational early years and to support families with flexible nurturing environments that meet their real needs. This project is particularly meaningful because of its proximity to the Vancouver General Hospital. There's a well-documented need for extended-hour childcare and early learning in this area, especially for medical staff and shift workers. That kind of care isn't easy to deliver. It takes experience, training, and the right environment, all of which we will carefully plan out with Vancouver Coastal Health to navigate any new style services, for example, the provision of twenty-four-hour care and how this fits with the needs of children. That's why it matters that C F A is the most, the chosen operator for this site. We've been leaders in early learning in Canada for over twenty-five years and in Vancouver specifically. We've been working closely with the city for several years to help address space creation challenges in our sector. We've engaged directly with mayor, council, city staff and M L As to advocate for scalable, high-quality early learning solutions in areas where families live and work. We're also fortunate to have an incredibly capable franchise partner lined up for this school, Armin and Pre Calu. They're among our most experienced and committed C F A owners, operators who deeply understand both the educational and operational standards required to run a high-performing early learning program, especially in a complex site like this. With extended care expectations and community integration, strong local ownership is key to successful execution. Armin and Pre bring that strength in full and have significant experience with projects of this nature. Beyond the residents of this development, the C F A school will serve a broader community. Our schools act as a hub for families, encouraging them to put down tools, put down roots, participate in the local economy and stay in their neighborhoods longer. We help parents return to work confidently and we provide children with the foundation they need for lifelong learning and wellbeing. This proposal represents more than density. It represents livability, access and community building. We're proud to be part of it and we're ready to get to work. Enclosing the foresight of the developer and initiating a project that fits so perfectly with the city's commitment to delivering additional childcare and early learning spaces should be lauded and we will continue to work with the stakeholders, both within the city and third parties who are motivated towards this common objective. Thank you again all for your time and consideration and I'd welcome any questions.
Yeah, Paul, so can I ask you if you are a resident of Vancouver as a procedure question?
I am, I'm on the west end.
Okay, thank you. That's all my question. Alright, thanks Paul. Uh, clerk, do we have any other additional speakers? Sarah? Yeah, please go ahead Sarah.
I don't have all the papers this time, but um, beginning part about council authority and all the things that are listed, policies and bylaws, um. I don't know how the, how the city chooses which ones to put there. Um, they don't have even said in amendments that maybe don't try to test us if we've read some of them at some point, but didn't go through. It was, um, so I'm the sucker reading all these things and, um. Anyways, there's not enough time. So the, like I said in another one, they're only showing evidence of Broadway Plan and even then asking for these bylaws to push it even further. Um, I'm gonna stick in my lane and go with the tree protections bylaw, which is not listed in the ones. So I don't know if city, if that's city authority versus council authority, maybe you can ask city as council to put it there because it is your authority, I'm not sure whose authority. Um, so Schedule C, you know, it has the number that you need on the property. This property says with the removing of eighty-five percent of the city's trees, um, they will add more trees after that so that it will require to have the minimum, which is actually thirty-four point seven two on this property, but they're gonna aim for thirty-six. Um, there's uh, evidence in a forty-minute walk from here, if we're talking about walkable cities, of, um, violations, violations without permits, very close, that's been, um, put through, you'll start to hear them. There's a good thing there's that severance thing on the end of these bylaws, right? Um, because, um, I'm really like, like just pay attention to what's already going through, I guess, uh, fight for the bylaws that exist because that thirty-six will not be the minimum thirty-four by the time of it. Because I've walked by properties where the contractors and I've filed complaints and then I get rung around by the city, I can tell you all the different departments. And then I just go to the contractor, I'm like, yo, like, what's the deal? I've, I don't mean to be a nuisance. I've said, you know, look at all these things that are going on. And, um, and they're like, yeah, well, the city asked us to do that actually. So like in the development permit application process that we don't get to speak on and hopefully you guys pay attention to like, because they don't want to answer the questions here. Like they're deciding like which ones stay and which ones go, so twenty-three, I could be wrong, in the twenties have gone. Four are staying, city-owned, and they will replant thirty, thirty-two or something like, you know, it's thirty-six bare minimum. But then while the construction's happening, it's, oh, the city tells the applicant they need to bulldoze this one over. No, I don't know, I wasn't there in the conversation, I don't know what the words are, um, because of the water main. Well, it's like that, the water pipe, like that's something you know before it passes development application. Because you're discussing it there. So you can point out then that we can't get rid of twenty of these trees and just save these four, because maybe these four will be bulldozed through, even though our plans, and I know landscaping's involved and it's really hard to keep up with all the designs and stuff and, um. Yeah, like I said, I mean, we haven't even gotten into acts and laws that are consequential of these kinds of designs by applicant staff, I don't know, council makes the bylaws so that the. Yeah, because the policies are guidelines, right? So, you know, with that severability, who, who, who do you go to out of those three, right? The, if it's the council, the city, the applicant, like who's gonna be, um, actually dealing with those courts if we're right about the laws and the acts that are the the cause of, or not the cause, the, uh, the consequence of the design. Hope people work together and recognize that we can build density with designs that don't like just, you know, whatever. It's not in your favor to go for it.
Thank you Sarah. Alright, so do we have any other additional speakers? Okay, seeing no additional speakers, uh, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing there's few or no public comments received after two P M today, I'm also closing the receipt of public comments. Okay, so as what we discussed, we're gonna take thirty minutes break and then we're gonna be come back at six sixteen to, to, to do the debate and comments. Thanks everyone.
I can hear it great, thanks.
Perfect, thanks.
Yeah, but I can't.
Oh, there we go. Okay, I'll get you. Yeah, yeah, I got you. Thanks. All right. Thanks, everyone. Uh, we're gonna continue with the meeting. Does applicant team have any closing comments?
Thank you, council, for hearing us today and for hearing all the speakers and taking the time. Um, we understand any development like this has an impact on the neighbors and we respect that. And we will continue our discussions with the neighbors and make sure we can do what we can on our part uh to be good neighbors uh before construction and ensuring we notify them at well ahead of time and also during construction. Um, we will absolutely be doing surveys of their properties to ensure there is no impact on their property. Um, and generally what we do is try to collaborate very closely with everyone around us um to make sure uh we have as little impact as possible um during construction and onwards after that. Um, we're very excited about this project, so we hope it can proceed and we're ready to submit our development permit very soon. So we'd love to be in the ground moving over the next year if possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No comments from staff other than the to remind council that there's a yellow memo with this item.
Thank you. Does council have any final question for staff? It's in an uh clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of the public comments?
We did receive one additional public comment.
Okay, so we have one additional comments. I was told how there's only one sentence. Uh, not sure if council you would like to take a recess to read that comment, read that one sentence. I didn't see any. Uh, okay, so we're gonna pass on this. Uh, I'd like to remind council that how we need to move the recommendations for item five together with the yellow memo dated April the seventh, twenty twenty five, entitled CD one rezoning eight sixteen to eight sixteen West thirteenth Avenue and twenty nine fifteen to twenty nine twenty five Willow Street. Yeah, council will make a decision on this uh application. We have a mover from Council Claussen, a second there. Second by Council Kerbyon. Council members, is there any discussion? Council Claussen?
Uh, thanks very much, uh, chair and uh to our speakers, uh, the applicant and and to staff for the work uh behind this right now. Um, uh, I um, uh, we heard from um the new vice president of community services, Bonnie Wilson, who is uh taking over from um uh Bob Chapman, who retired last week. And uh her statements with regard to um the necessity of making sure there's appropriate housing uh for the workforce uh at um at Vancouver General um was um, I think, an important uh consideration for me. And in addition to um uh what we're we're seeing in terms of the proposed uh childcare, uh one of the speakers uh was critical about um uh uh what we've accomplished so far this term in terms of uh in terms of new childcare spaces. I think it deserves um a more uh uh detailed examination, uh but I don't disagree. I think we've underperformed in terms of the number of spaces that we've been able to approve, notwithstanding um some of the things that we have brought to to council. Both uh councillor Dominado and myself have had uh unanimous support from council on uh on measures to try and expand and improve childcare uh and in terms of streamlining regulations and uh and and harmonization with the province. So I do think that that is uh uh something that I I hope that we can uh continue to uh work with our staff to make sure that these are uh projects that um will uh help uh uh communities that really need them. Uh, the 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 presence of childcare in their communities. Um, the idea of having a twenty four hour childcare, when I first heard about this project from the applicant, I was extraordinarily um excited about that idea. Uh, I think that um it responds to real uh demand um that people who work shifts at the hospital uh will definitely be reliant upon. And I hope that we uh as a as a city staff and and our team here uh work dutifully uh with the health authority and making sure that um that becomes something that uh uh will be realized with this project. Um, I also would like hearing from Alison um from the senior society of B C. Um, this is a new housing will accommodate seniors in the community. We know we have an aging demographic. This is an area that is uh particularly suited to walkability, is close shopping, uh obviously healthcare services, uh other amenities are in the area. And I would like to try and make sure that we are uh very focused on being able to provide more housing for seniors. Um, I actually lived just four blocks from this address for about five years uh when my wife and I um had our first child, Sophie. And so I know how important it is. Uh, I can feel like I can relate uh to to families in the neighborhood who are really looking for those childcare services um and also uh access to more housing options. Um, so uh with that, I will be supporting this application and uh I I look forward to seeing it being realized. Um, uh, just with regard to some of the comments that I we heard from uh people who have concerns about the project, I'm I'm glad that um uh the applicant has acknowledged that they're planning to to work closely with uh with residents in the area. Um, but it's also an area that is right beside a a parking lot um uh across the street. Um, and uh, you know, there, this is an area that will hopefully um uh be able to um add the, you know, enough sort of active transportation and other ways of making sure that that we mitigate the impacts on the community. But ultimately, we need to have housing in this area. And I think that the fact that it could well serve uh people working in the healthcare uh system at the Vancouver General Hospital would be uh very advantageous to the whole city. So thanks.
Thanks. Councilor Maloney?
Uh, I'm particularly interested in the childcare center aspect of this development. Uh, when I was campaigning, I spoke to hundreds of parents who either were lucky enough to have childcare and knew a lot of people who didn't have childcare or who were struggling so much to find childcare close close to home that they were considering moving out of the city um or planning to. Uh, the other aspect of this this that appeals to me very much is the um is providing housing for um emer- emergency response essentially because I'm very much preoccupied by um the need to have uh emergency services workers of of all descriptions able to live in the city of Vancouver. Um, having lived in Chilera for five years where earthquakes are so frequent that um they happen all the time. And you can pretty much guarantee that if your building hasn't already fallen down in an earthquake, you're pretty much going to be okay. But that's certainly not the situation here. And I do worry a lot about our emergency preparedness and how easy it would be for essential emerg- emergency services workers to um be onsite, re- ready to help um residents of the city of Vancouver i- um when the big earthquake comes. So um it's no small thing to be providing uh housing where um hospital workers can live close to where they work. Thanks.
Thanks. Council Kerbyon?
Uh, yeah, I I mean, again, similar comments. I think we're hearing from a lot of uh residents with respects to change in the neighborhood. But uh I sort of try to look at the context of where a proposed development is going in. And it was noteworthy to me in this report that we've gotten overall vacancy rate in the city of point eight percent, and this is point four, so it's half. Um, so we we need uh new rental homes in the city in general, um but particularly, I think, it's identified in this area with the um additional several hundred units and the forty three below market ones. Um, others have spoken about the childcare. I I do think that um, you know, in having, being part of a first responder family, I can attest to the fact that very few of them live in the city and they work uh shift, four shifts. Uh, and a lot of them, three of the four shifts for a lot of folks. It's the same for nurses, uh definitely for police officers and firefighters are overnight shifts, right? And that's pretty difficult, right? And on families, if you're trying to maintain that employment. So um it is a very real concern that was raised there. What I do like is um the privately owned public space that is fully accessible to the public. Um, I had, when I was on park board, asked for an inventory of some of those spaces because there was an increasing um trend at one point of closing them off. Uh, where they were probably on private spaces, but they were closed at certain hours regated. And uh based on the questions I asked and the design, it looks like that's not the case for this one. Um, and I think it'll look to provide some sort of complimentary seating and and some, it's certainly taking into account the context um in terms of the adjacency uh to blend into the public realm. So it is badly needed housing. It is within the Broadway Plan, um and I will support it. I think that um hopefully staff are hearing that we are having a number of questions on different public items that are coming forward with respects to how frontage guidelines are are applied and tower separation. So I think that's something uh hopefully we can take away and seek further clarity when some of these reports come forward to help the public understand how those policies are applied. Uh, cause those are, those are valid, uh I think, and important questions. But um overall, it's new housing, um it provides amenities and I will support it. Thank you.
Thanks, counselor. Uh, seeing no else on the queue, so I'm gonna call the vote. Uh, clerk, can you take us through the voting screen and council please register your vote on the voting panel? All right, so this application passed unanimously. All right, thanks. So moving along, the next item is uh num- item number six, CD one rezoning. Thanks, everyone. Item six, CD one rezoning, one twenty one to one twenty nine West eleventh Avenue. Before we begin, if anyone believes they have a conflict interest, now is the time to declare it. Does anyone have a conflict of interest to disclose? Seeing none. The clerk will now read the application and the summary of the correspondence received.
This is an application by Haven Developments Limited to rezone one two one to one two nine West eleventh Avenue from R T six residential district to C D one comprehensive development district to permit the development of an eighteen story mixed use building containing a hundred and sixty five rental units, of which twenty percent of the residential floor area is for below market rental units and commercial space on the ground floor. A floor space ratio of five point eight zero and a height of fifty nine meters are proposed. The general manager of planning urban design and sustainability recommends approval subject to conditions set out in the summary and recommendation. The following correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing. Twenty eight pieces of correspondence in support and forty one pieces of correspondence in opposition. and 41 pieces of correspondence in opposition. This represents all correspondence received up to 2 P M today, Wednesday 23rd, April 23rd.
Thank you. This is the first call for speakers. Any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445P before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there will be an opportunity for new speakers and mid-speakers to be added to the end of the registered speakers list, we have staff from Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability here to present the application.
Okay, good evening, Chair and councilors. My name is Chi Chan. I am the rezoning planner for this rezoning application at 121 to 129 West 11th Avenue under the Broadway Plan. Just want to check that we can see the presentation on the feed.
There we go.
Okay. Like the previous items during this public hearing, we'd like to note that there is a yellow memo attached to this report as well. It recommends the minor amendment to the CD1 bylaw as a result of the zoning and bylaw, zoning development bylaw amendments made on April 1st to horizontal angle daylight regulations and the renaming of the access to natural light. The subject site shown in red is made up of three lots located mid-block between Manitoba and Columbia Streets. It is in close proximity to transit along Broadway and the 10th Avenue bike route. There are several parks in the area, including Major Matthews Park, Jonathan Rogers and Mount Pleasant Parks. The site has a frontage of 149 feet and a depth of 122 feet. There is an area for a lane to the north of the site, but the lane is currently not open to pedestrians or vehicles. The site and the surrounding area are developed with single detached and duplex housing. Some of the surrounding neighboring houses are listed on the Vancouver Heritage Register, but not the ones on this particular site. The three houses on the site contain 11 secondary rental units and the city's tenant relocation and protection policies apply. The Broadway Plan is a 30-year plan focused on opportunities to integrate new housing, jobs and amenities around the new Broadway subway. The site is located within the Mount Pleasant RT Subarea B, which allows for consideration of rezoning for rental building with 20% of the residential floor area for below-market rental units. A tower up to 18 stories may be considered here with a density of up to 5.5 FSR, but minor increases in density may also be considered where there is ground-level local-serving retail space. This application was submitted on December 15, 2023. It proposes 165 units with 20% of the floor area for below-market rental units and a small ground-floor commercial unit. The building height is 18 stories with a maximum height of 194 feet, density of 5.8 FSR. Underground parking is accessed from the street. Council, please note that the printed versions of your report reference parking access from the lane, and that was incorrect. As previously mentioned, the lane is inaccessible, so the driveway is from the street, 11th Avenue on this one. This table shows starting rents as well as the average annual household incomes they serve in Vancouver's west side. Starting rents for the below-market rental units are discounted to 20% below citywide average rents. These rents would be secured through a housing agreement which prohibit the stratification of units. A question and answer period was held from April 17 to the 30th of last year. A total of 385 submissions were received. Support was expressed for this project's rental housing as well as its proximity to transit services along Broadway and the two subway stations, future and present, at Mount Pleasant and City Hall. Some respondents expressed concern that the building's height and scale do not fit with the existing neighborhood's heritage character and that the project will generate more noise and traffic in a quiet residential area. In response, staff note that the houses on the site are not included in the Vancouver Heritage Register, while the building's four-story podium and its setbacks align with the existing houses on the street. A further condition is included in Appendix B to improve the relationship of the building's podium with the existing character houses on the street. The proposal meets the plan's urban design expectations in terms of height and scale for a new rental building. And in terms of impacts as quiet residential neighborhood, the proposal is located close to shops, services, transit and bike routes. A transportation demand management plan will also be required to determine the potential reductions in demand for vehicle trips. The application is contributing 20% of the residential floor area as below-market rental units. They're also contributing approximately 1.6 million in development cost levies and a 213,000 public art contribution. In summary, the proposal meets the intent of the Broadway Plan. Staff recommend approval of this application subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. The applicant is online and the architect is here in person. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chi. Well, okay, would the applicant team like to present the application? If you're in attendance?
Senator, who's your head of work, Mr. Anderson? Hi, I'm Adrian, we're Haven Developments. We do not have the presentation, but we will be available at any stations around the first time we're choosing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council to staff or the applicant team, noting this is the only opportunity for council to ask questions of the applicant? Councilor Claussen?
Thanks, Chair, and thank you, staff, for the presentation. I just, it twigged on me the comment about the relationship to the street, the work being proposed for the podium. Can somebody expand a little bit on what that might look like and what efforts could be made from terms of aesthetic or materials or whatever it might be to try and harmonize that relationship with the street and the existing rental, or excuse me, existing residential?
Thank you, Councilor, for the question. At the development permit stage, there will certainly be further work on materiality, colors, and as well as landscaping, so that's to be worked out. Currently, the proposal as is, the podium is set back to match the line of the existing houses. It's in, the height matches the line of the existing house roofs. So there is a condition in Appendix B to talk about having a look at the design of that podium to make sure it's a slightly better fit in terms of, let's say, void spaces, colors, design and whatnot with the existing character landscape.
Okay, thank you. Good answer, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Fry?
So I'm curious about this project. This is the third rezoning application from Haven developers in the last year. And as far as I can tell, they haven't built anything yet. Is that typical of how these kind of rezonings occur? Is it?
The question to staff or the applicant?
Well, maybe both. I mean, how often do we process development or rezoning applications that are more land assemblies and not necessarily building?
So I don't want to speak for the applicant, but Haven has had three recent applications since last summer. And they wouldn't have had the time. They would be going through a development permit process, building permit process. So there's still some length of time before shovels get into the ground.
Do we have an expectation that they will follow through with these? Or I guess what I'm getting at is there's been suggestions perhaps that these are more speculative moves than actual intention to develop, but rather, and so is that something that we look for as a city when we're processing rezonings?
We can't assume the intentions of the applicant. We have to process what is in front, what we have received and assume that they will carry it out or intend to carry it out. But I would defer those questions back to the applicant.
And before I ask the applicant then, is there a covenant that we apply in these sort of conditions that suggest that, I mean?
There is no covenant per se that they are required to build. But, you know, they certainly will need to enact and pay us the development cost levies and sign a whole bunch of legal agreements for them to proceed.
On the D P?
On, no, as a condition of rezoning as well, as well as go and get a D P.
Okay, okay. Sure, then if I can ask the applicant if they're here? The applicant's online? Oh.
Yes. Hi, Councilor Fry. So this point has been brought up a couple of times throughout our public hearings. And we are a new developer, but that doesn't mean we don't have experience and that does not mean we don't intend on developing any of these. As you know, the market conditions nowadays is quite challenging. So we are going to do everything in our power to build these projects, but a lot of it will be market dependent. But we have to go through the rezoning process in order for us to even get to the point of whether we can build or not.
Okay. So I guess I don't want to get into too much of the specifics of the financing on this and stuff. I don't know if that's appropriate for me to ask. So I'll leave it at that for the time being and maybe jump on later. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor. Okay, so this is the second call for speakers. If there are any speakers for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by the participant code 1061445P before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. We will now hear from the public speakers. Any registered speaker in council chamber, please come forward to the podium when your name is called. Speaker will have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Our first public speaker is Jolene Timko. Online?
Yes, I am here.
Yeah, please go ahead, Jolene.
Thank you, thank you so much for having me. My name is Jolene Timko and I am a homeowner just up the street on 11th Avenue from this rezoning application. My overwhelming feeling about this application is one of despair because rezoning and development applications appear to be approved at the expense of thoughtful, clever development that retains the very heritage neighborhoods that draw people into Vancouver. I've sat through hours of last week and today listening to very thoughtful responses. And as a social scientist, I think if things are predetermined in a public consultation, you should let the public know that ahead of time. I'm opposed to this report and I ask that the rezoning application be rejected for a number of reasons, which you have already heard from many other speakers. In this area, heritage preservation. This is a heritage-designated RT6 zone in Mount Pleasant. We already successfully balance increased density with heritage preservation without towers. And we know that this is important to the city. And indeed, on the city's own website, you use the images of character homes on 10th and 11th avenues, specifically on 11th Avenue within a block of the proposed rezoning site to advertise the importance of character home retention in the city. These are the homes that are going to be lost. These are at risk if we allow development of towers inside residential areas, not on the peripheries, but right in the middle of a block surrounded by character and heritage homes. A well-designed, small-scale strata, however, would complement and add to this block. And a speaker last week was talking about Toronto and I agree that unless the city literally plans to raise the houses in this area and start from scratch, simply inserting a generic tower into this small space is ill-conceived. There's also shading concerns about the proposed tower shadow, which will negatively affect the registered heritage houses on West 10th Avenue. This building would loom over registered heritage houses. As well as Major Matthews Park, Mount Pleasant's already a neighborhood recognized by the Vancouver Park Board as having low green space. And we need healthy access to sun and green spaces for young children. And it appears that Major Matthews, while being a well-loved pocket park, removing the fence and enabling more access to this tiny park seems to privatize a public space and also raises just generally concerns about the safety of young children. Parking in this area is already a challenge and the proposed development does not provide enough parking stalls, only 60 versus a required 94. So you could have potentially 100 vehicles needing to be parked on the street. And parking is already a significant challenge, as is traffic. There is no laneway or alleyway to provide access to underground parking in this proposed tower, meaning all traffic merges onto 11th Avenue. Traffic on 11th is already congested, it's single lane. There are frequently aggressive confrontations between drivers on 11th Avenue. And many, many weekday commuters deviate off 12th Avenue to race down 11th Avenue in order to get to Broadway, making this small, very busy street dangerous for families like mine with small children crossing the street and those of my neighbors. West 11th isn't wide enough to accommodate any additional traffic in terms of extra bikes and vehicles at this scale. And I would ask if a traffic and parking study has not yet been done on 11th Avenue, that you withhold any judgment? This should not be approved until such a parking and traffic study has been completed. Another concern is schools. Great for all of these proposals, there are no new services in terms of schools. Our local elementary school, Simon Fraser, is already at and over capacity and there will be huge challenges. There's already waiting lists for existing families. So an influx of new families will not be able to be accommodated within this catchment. What is the plan for us? Who will be affected? It's also hard to understand how a tower in this location, which would essentially be squeezed into what is now a duplex and two houses, provides anything that's approaching a meaningful community enhancement, quote unquote, meaningful community enhancement. And that contrary to the report, this proposed development does not fit into the neighborhood context, nor will it really enhance the public realm. We don't need retail spaces on 11th Avenue, given what we have close by on Broadway and the other existing major corridors. And so I'm for increased density that preserves the historic and character of this historic neighborhood.
Sorry, Jolene, you're out of time. But thank you for speaking to council.
Fine, I would just ask, I'd just ask council then to consider a multi-unit townhouse in the space rather than a generic tower.
Okay, thank you. Speaker number two is Peter Seeling. Is Peter in person? Yeah. Please go ahead, Peter. Excuse me? Yeah. Please go ahead. You have five minutes.
Hi, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm kind of gonna riff off what that person said and a couple of things. One is, do you know what? When I look at this building, it looks like to me lazy and socially irresponsible architecture. And I want you to compare it to what we got on, what we have built on Seymour Street, according to the Beasley, you know, when Larry Beasley was here and the difference in streetscape. Second, I have a quote from the Vancouver Sun. And I'm sorry to insult the architects, but you know, you get what you give. This is from the Vancouver Sun last week. Academic studies around North America confirm that rezoning to permit greater supply raises land and residential prices fails to create affordability. As Mike Hurley, Mayor of Burnaby, has stated on several occasions, the idea that supply will lead to affordability is an absolute fallacy. Next, I want to point out that we are not a secondary arterial road. We're a small road. I'm a neighbor in the next block. Third, if you think about those 100 people, our apartments, that don't have parking, let's say that even 25 of them have cars. That's going to take up one whole city block on one side of parking. It's already limited. Again, I want to emphasize this is a heritage neighborhood. It's a special zoning, one of, I believe, only two in the city. We have spent 40 years developing this neighborhood. And I think it's of a value, not just that people live there, it is a resource for the whole city. It is potentially an economic driver. If you think about where people go, when they go visit different cities in Europe, where do they go? A lot of times, they go to the old heritage parts of the city. I would be very careful about destroying this. It reminds me of the 1980s with, I think it was called the Plan 200, Project 200. It was going to raise much of Strathcona, Chinatown, Gastown and the West End. And I'm wondering how many of you think that's a good idea and want to replicate that? The second major thing I want to point out, besides the heritage value, is, you know, I started a group called Mount Pleasant Heritage Gardens and Park. The reason I did that is because if you take the unity of this RT6 zoning, what we have is a unique park. It is not like this little park on Major Matthews. It's not like the park on 7th. This is an arterial park. All the academic studies point out that mental health and, well, that mental health is supported, sustained, increased. Blood pressure goes down, anxiety, depression is all mitigated when people have places, quiet spaces. The G V R D is encouraging parks that have that. This is the closest we have that's being built. Nothing in the Broadway Plan is Nothing in the Broadway Plan is coming close to this. Yeah, so that's what we have. It is the only linear park that we have developing, that we don't have to knock anything down. Nowhere in the Broadway Plan have I seen anything like it. And when we have all these hundreds and thousands of people that we're shoving along Broadway, if they want to go out and take a walk, they need some peace and they need some quiet, where do they go? Where will they go? But this here, they only have to walk one block. I remember back a couple of months ago when that um, guy downtown, remember he killed somebody and he chopped off the hand of somebody else. And uh, the mayor went on la- on TV and everybody was crying, oh, you know, we need some help from the government. We can't do this alone. There's nothing we can do about this. What I'm saying is there is something we can do about it. This is part of our mental health. And you know, uh, again, it's like uh, uh, the heritage. If we, if we don't stop this, we'll never get it back. So, inclusion, I just want to say, you know, if you agree to rezone this, don't come crying to me, I'm sorry to put it that way, or to us, or to the newspaper, or the province, and tell us that your hands are tied and there's nothing you can do when you will have been the ones who tied the knot. Thanks.
Thank you, Peter. Speaker number three is uh, Lysbeth Thor- Thorvald. Yeah, please go ahead.
Good evening, Vancouver City councillors, as well as all in attendance. My name is Lysbeth Thorvald, and I live on West Eleventh, right next to the development proposal. I'm not opposed to increased housing density, but I am against the proposed development of an eighteen-story rental apartment building at this particular location. If you look at the site in the context of the overall Broadway Plan, on paper, the proposal checks all the boxes according to this plan. However, if you look at the map of the area and the actual site, you realize that there are a number of reasons why this project should not be built. The computer-generated drawing of the proposed tower places it in a park-like setting, surrounded by greenery. You barely notice some vaguely drawn houses in the vicinity. This representation is misleading. In actual fact, on the map, you see that the proposal is crammed in between three heritage houses on the west, one heritage house on the corner of Manitoba and Eleventh Avenue, and a small one-block city park, Major Matthew Park. On the north side, it would be built directly against the laneway houses behind two heritage houses on Tenth Avenue and onto part of a three-story walk-up apartment building. The proposal of an eighteen-story building in the middle of a block in this quiet and leafy neighborhood with a, without a back lane, with a series of well-preserved heritage houses, most of them on the heritage regist- registry, would not only be an architectural eyesore, but a great loss of historical value as this area is one of the oldest neighborhoods with Victorian and Victorian houses in Vancouver and should be preserved as such for generations to come. Parking and traffic in general will be a nightmare, of course, during and after the construction. There are many elderly residents who need their vehicles and need to park in, on the street. I was surprised to see in Appendix B of Conditions of Approval, page twelve of seventeen pages, paragraph B, that no sewer upgrades are needed for this development. We've had several backup sewage emergencies on our block over the past years at the street level. I also wonder what the digging of a deep hole will do to the foundations of these heritage houses. The foundations to houses around the early part of the twentieth century were not built with the construction of a neighboring future eighteen-story building in mind. The only access for emergency vehicles to the building will be from Eleventh Avenue since there is no back lane unless access is granted through Major Matthew Park. This takes me to another point. In Appendix B, Conditions of Approval, page ten of seventeen, section Housing, paragraph one point forty-three states, "Development should be designed in accordance with the High Density Housing for Families with Children Guidelines, including the provision of, under point A, an outdoor amenity area to include areas suitable for a range of children's play activities and urban agriculture appropriate in size for the scale of the project and situated to maximize sunlight access." Major Matthew Parks Park is a public park for children two to five years old of age, therefore not intended for children of all ages. It is well, it's well-used public park by the community and should not be incorporated by the developer. Overall, I think that the development of a building as a much smaller scale, four to six stories, would be better suited to this quiet, leafy, beautiful, historical and walkable neighborhood with apartments larger in size than the ones proposed for this project. Presently from three hundred sixty-one feet for a studio apartment to eight hundred and eleven feet for a three-bedroom apartment. We should create housing for people with and without families, homes, but not warehouses. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Speaker number four has withdrawn. Speaker number five is Luis Velgas. Not in his chamber, not online. Okay, speaker number six is Monique uh, Ponsle. Yeah, please go ahead.
Have a slide presentation?
Yeah, we're gonna pre- bring your presentation to the uh, screen. There we go. Whenever you're ready, you have five minutes.
Where is the operator?
Yeah, it's over there.
Ah, okay, so um, I was planning to ask to the operator to go very fast between the slide three and the slide nineteen. Is that possible? Yeah, okay, wait, thank you.
Okay, I'll reset your timer. Please go ahead whenever you're ready.
So my name is Monique Ponsle. I'm citizen of Vancouver, and I'm o- opposed to this reasoning. Sir Chee Chan conclude that the application meet the intents of the Broadway Plan. Since when intent can crush compliance to principle and rules? The report mention that three houses in the, the three houses in this application are not heritage home, but doesn't mention that the city block in question is the densest city block in Vancouver with register house. Nineteen houses and four laneway houses are protected by the Heritage Vancouver Register. All this building of eighteen-story, fifty-nine meters high of concrete glass with little architectural merit and squeeze in this block aligned with the principle of City of Vancouver Heritage Program, as per the city website. And with the guiding principle of the Broadway Plan stating page thirty-two, the distinctive quality of neighborhood, et cetera, should be retained and enhanced while integrating new housing and job space. The report gave no opportunity to talk about the context, design, and how small this hundred and sixty-five unit will be. I appreciate the, the, the question of councillor Fry about the two other applications for H U V N because it, the, the building looks exactly the same, uh, almost exactly the same, like one size fits all. I would absolutely support the development up to six-story. Can we go on slide three, please? Okay, so the blue section is the rezoning site. No, uh, that's the number two, three. Yes, thank you. The blue section is the rezoning site. Light-colored cover nineteen house and four laneway house register as heritage by the city. The rezoning site is not the only option to have an eighteen-story building in the block estate by H U V N. I hope that until now, private developer do not set or do urban planning. So you will see the yellow part, that's the little uh, building, and it's on the market. And uh, only God knows what will happen to the big orange side there. It's the church, and the church is in pretty uh, poor condition. If we can go now, we are going to walk a very quick march from slide three to nineteen, please. So you are going to see um, some of the heritage home not even mentioned in the re- the report. They are all wood frame, an average, uh, hundred faster, please, otherwise I will pass my five minutes. They are wood frame, are average hundred and twenty years old, still beautiful and strong with mature front garden. So we are now at slide nineteen, which is the rezoning application. Oops. Sorry, but I left my glasses, so I cannot rely on that. So, uh, the rezoning application side is in red and definitively shoehorned in the neighborhood, and hundred and sixty-five unit will be squeezed into the building. The laneway house in blue will be completely locked in with fifty meters wall of concrete and glass, somehow the similar situation for hundred and thirty-three and lander halls. Next. So we are now at the little uh, secured park, the Major Matthew. Next. Broadway Plan, page four hundred and ten. The Broadway Plan is supposed to protect existing park and recreation space from loss and encroachment by new utilities, structure and building.
Sorry, you're out of time?
Um, I spend, maybe you can grace me?
Did give you fifteen mi- seconds.
Okay, so let's go directly to the next slide. And you will see exactly what the developer want to do. Look at the arrows. They are going in and out of the park. There is definitively a prioritization of the park.
Thank you, you're out of time. Sorry, I did give you a lot of actual seconds already.
Okay.
Yeah, but thank you so much for speaking to council.
Thank you.
Okay, speaker number seven is Carol Van Kamp.
Uh, hello?
Yeah, please go ahead, Carol.
Okay, thank you. Uh, thank you, council. Uh, my name is Carol Van Kamp, and I'm a, a resident of West Mount Pleasant for the last fifty years. Um, so uh, I just wanted to let everyone know that I'm opposed to the rezoning for this particular piece of land. And I really do appreciate everything that the um, that the former speakers have said. They've touched on all sorts of points that just strike me to the core. I have serious concerns about the height and the mass of this proposed building. Its complete lack of any connection to the surrounding heritage character neighborhood through architecture, design or scale. I'm, my heart goes out to those neighbors that are but this development because as Monique said, they're going to be facing walls. Um, and the shadowing that's going to come as a result of this building, both on Major Matthews Park and on all of the properties on the west side, um, is going to be quite shocking, the privacy for those who are immediately around it, shocking as well. And uh, I would also like to say that, given the ever-increasing number of rezoning applications in the area between Yukon and Quebec and between Broadway and Twelfth, and at this time, I think there's five posted, and that doesn't include the two towers on the mech site. Um, there, I have serious concerns about the school in the catchment area not being able to handle the students. I think about the school that was promised to Falls Creek, and I do believe we have students from Falls Creek at Simon Fraser. So I'd certainly like to hear more than just from the school board saying they're sort of in the works. I'd like to hear that they actually are aware that with all the development in this area, that that school will be not sufficient to invite families into the area. And the same goes for the park space. We have a few around the area, but nothing that can handle what's slated to come down the pipe. Um, and also for the community center, number one, Kingsway, has been a, a real bonus for everyone. But with the development that's proposed in the immediate area, the capacity will not be there. Also have concern about infrastructure, and Lysbeth mentioned something about the sewers, and there have been issues on Eleventh Avenue over the last two years. So I would hope that the city is aware that with this added development, particularly in that area, the water, the sewer, the electrical, um, it, and also the fact that there are streams that run through the area, that um, all of that's taken into consideration. Um, I would also ask the council at this time to take a look at the range of options out there other than the CD one twenty, uh, eighteen-story rental. Consider the work that was done on the RT six zoning by neighbors over the last thirty years. And someone mentioned that the houses in the area were um, single-family duplex. But the majority of the houses actually are multifamily rental or strata. So the infill and the um, creation of multifamily in heritage style or older heritage homes has been a real bonus in bringing a diverse mix of people into the area, and we've been delighted with that. What we hope is that it retains the family so that they can raise their children in the neighborhood. And I have a big fear about the size of the apartments that are proposed for these new rental buildings, that even though they're listed as family accommodation, they'll be actually too small for families to feel they can comfortably stay, and we really want them to stay. Um, so I would really appreciate it if the council would consider the RT six zoning, look at the four-to-six-to-nine-story building possibility, and um, reach out for co-op and family-oriented as well. We still have the opportunity to create unique and diverse neighborhoods that welcome everyone, ones that support livability and help Vancouverites to thrive. I'm fully aware that on paper, this rezoning application meets the specifications for the Broadway Plan in most ways. Regardless, my preference would be that the city takes a rezoning pause on this site. To be quite honest, I'm sad, I'm angry, and ultimately heartbroken at the way this is playing out. So I would really appreciate your consideration. Um, we feel that we are losing our unique neighborhoods, we're losing, we're losing our tree canopies and our history, and we're replacing them with rows of mediocre, repetitive and unaffordable rental towers that are beginning to cast, will, will cast shadows on what was once a beautiful city. I think we can do better. I think we can have fun with this, we can be creative.
Sorry, Carol.
Okay, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Hey, speaker number eight is Brian Drummond. Please go ahead, Brian.
Hello, thank you. Um, good afternoon, acting mayor and council members. My name is Brian Drummond, and I live at one thirty-two West Tenth Avenue in Vancouver. I'm here today to express my strong opposition to this proposed development. My family's lived and worked in Mount Pleasant since nineteen eighty-eight. My wife and I, along with our now-grown children, live uh, in three different homes in this neighborhood. We care deeply about preserving what makes Mount Pleasant so special. We fully support thoughtful uh, increased rental housing intensification without question. We lived in a nearby loft, surrounded by new towers going up, and our children currently live in older apartments right near here, with high rises approved beside them, and we supported those developments. However, placing this two-hundred-foot tower on a block filled with not just quote, "character homes" as described in the developer's proposal, but with City of Vancouver Heritage Registered and Protected Homes, including the oldest standing house in Vancouver, the eighteen eighty-eight Clark House, my home, which is barely six feet from the property line of the proposed tower, it simply does not make sense. tower, it simply does not make sense. The developers make no mention of the historical importance of these homes. In fact, they depict them as blank white boxes in their renderings, leaving you unaware probably that they even exist. This block is fundamentally different from Haven's previously approved two-hundred-foot box. For example, at Fourteenth and Arbuthnot, there isn't a single designated heritage home on that block. At Broadway and Carolina, their other eighteen-story tower, only one heritage home exists and that it's already been built around by another complex. In contrast, this proposed site sits on a block where almost every single property, with the exception of the church on the corner in the smaller apartment building, is a heritage designated and protected home. These include homes on Eleventh Avenue, one oh four, one thirty-three, one thirty-seven, one thirty-nine, one forty and one forty-five, on Manitoba Street, two six four seven, on Tenth Avenue, one twenty-two, one twenty-four, one thirty, one thirty-two, one thirty-eight, one forty, one forty-four, one forty-eight, one fifty, one fifty-six, one sixty-six, one seventy, twenty-six eighteen on Columbia and twenty-six twenty-two on Columbia, all heritage designated homes, the entire block. That's over twenty City of Vancouver Heritage Homes on a single block, homes that draw locals and tourists alike, cameras in hand, hoping to capture an almost untouched piece of the city's past. People walk and bike here daily, just one block away from the bustle of Broadway. This development would jeopardize all of that. It would overshadow the Clark House, a stunning example of Victorian cottage and an A-level primary heritage site. This home isn't just old, it's a living piece of Vancouver's identity, part of a rare cohesive block of early architecture that tells the city's story. Once it's lost, it cannot be replaced. The developer calls this quote "sensitive density," saying the tower quote "responds to surrounding heights," but the surrounding buildings are single and multifamily heritage homes and low-rise apartments. A two-hundred-foot wall of glass and concrete is not a sensitive response in any way. True sensitive density means react, respecting the neighborhood's existing scale and character, not imposing a two-hundred-foot tower into the middle of it. Now, let's be clear, this is not about saying no to density, this is about saying yes to the right kind of density. A thoughtful scaled-down four-to-six-story complex well within the scope of the Broadway Plan would increase site density tenfold. It could be something creative, respectful, a project that's lit, has livability, builds community trust and still delivers much-needed housing. And there is no need, for God's sake, another coffee shop, there are twenty within two-to-three blocks, uh, all struggling to survive in this neighborhood as it is. We don't need another one below this project. With over a hundred and forty projects already in the pipeline, that's more than twenty thousand new homes in line for approval, another twenty thousand expected, this site does not need to be another eighteen-story tower to contribute meaningfully to our housing goals. Let's remember, this developer, Haven, calls itself quote "investor-centric" on its own website. Two of their eighteen-story towers have already been approved. They don't need to go three-for-three, especially not at the cost of destroying one of Vancouver's most historic blocks. If heritage residents like us need city approval just to change the trim color on our windows, how can a two-hundred-foot glass tower be allowed to rise right on top of these protected homes? You have a choice today. You can protect the Clark House, the oldest house in Vancouver, you can protect the Ladner House, the McCauley House, the Walsh House, the Moore House, you can preserve this rare intact heritage block and ask for a design that adds density and honors our history. We, the residents of this block, implore you, the thousands of people who visit this area each year, implore you, please reject this proposal or at the very least, send it back for serious scaled-down revisions. Vancouver deserves better, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, you are not allowed to do that. Yeah. Speaker number nine is Jim Laurie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I did have a PowerPoint presentation, um, but I made the mistaken assumption that I could submit it up to five.
Let me stop your timer first. Uh, let me ask, so did we receive the presentation?
Yeah, it was submitted yesterday.
We can pull out on the screen, hey?
And.
Sorry, yeah, so the slide was submitted late, so it's submitted in the correspondence, but so we cannot.
Yes, so.
Yeah. You can still talk five minutes, yeah.
I couldn't understand why my presentation couldn't be received at five o'clock yesterday, but my correspondence could. If councillors have it available on their screens, uh, it would be helpful for me to convey my thoughts, uh, if you could follow along. Uh, the first slide, uh, now I'll talk about it on three levels. I'll talk about the neighborhood planning level, I'll talk about the site planning and I'll talk about some land use considerations. The, uh, the site, uh, as you know, is within the Broadway Plan. It is also within the tier three of the, uh, city's, uh, transit-oriented areas, uh, which is a, uh, eight-story, uh, uh, building, uh, forum at three FSR. Uh, so there's a conflict between the plans. In our view, my view, uh, the, uh, the TOA tier is one that should be, uh, adhered to. The province adopted that, the city adopted it, and it provides a transition in scale and building size from close to the Skytrain stations, two hundred meters, four hundred meters, it's a diminishing, uh, scale and density. This is in the, this property, these, this property is in the tier three of both the Mount Pleasant Station and the, uh, Broadway City Hall Station. There was a previous application for two of the properties, one twenty-seven, one twenty-nine, about three years ago for a four-to-six, uh, story medium-density proposal, which I believe did go to development permit stage. Nobody had any objection with that on our neighborhood, um, and we would like to see that one, uh, reactivated if that is at all possible. I neglected to mention, I live just a few doors down in a, uh, my wife and I in a small eleven-hundred square foot, uh, coach house in, uh, beside one of the heritage homes. Uh, the, the design brief, um, and there's a graphic in the Haven Report I've replicated in my present presentation, I think it was shown by one of the earlier speakers, that shows the number of heritage, uh, sites in the neighborhood. And I would just guess it, uh, looking at the map, it's close to ninety percent, are heritage listed or have heritage potential? And heritage potential is a term used in the, uh, in the developer's design brief. What is not missing is the, two of the three properties that are on that site. Uh, one's nineteen, built nineteen oh one and one's built nineteen twelve. And from my untrained eye, it, it looks still worse for wear and tear than any of the other heritage potential sites on this block. Uh, again, the, uh, the design brief suggests that the heritage analysis, um, indicates that the proposal, the eighteen-story proposal harmonizes with the scale and architecture of the City Hall building. And there's a graphic that, uh, shows just that, shows this proposal and in the distance, City Hall and everything else in between is, is just, uh, appears to be blank slate. And with all due respect, I love the City Hall building, it's a great iconic, uh, building, but not one I necessarily want to see in my backyard, to, to use that term. Uh, the City Hall is in a lovely campus and, uh, uh, that's where, that's where it belongs. That's where a building of this sort belongs. Um, Major Matthews Park, um, just getting down the site level, this, this property shades, uh, Matthew, Major Matthews Park, both the, uh, spring and fall of the Canucks and the summer salsas. Um, Major Matthews Park is the only publicly-owned green space between Broadway, Yukon, Main Street and Sixteenth Avenue, an area of forty blocks. Uh, Jonathan Rogers Park is, uh, obviously south of Broadway, uh, but, uh, Major Matthews is the only one that has play apparatus for two-to-five-year-olds. But Jonathan Rogers Park is for older kids, go up to Mount Pleasant Park, uh, seven blocks away on the other side, on the south side of Sixteenth Avenue, again, it's for older kids. I take my grand, I babysit my granddaughter, one day a week, I take her there and it's best, it's the best thing. Um, talk to a shading, there is a graphic in my presentation that's, uh, taken right out of the, uh, two thousand and two version of the Broadway Plan, shows very clearly that building heights were intended to be set back to preserve, uh, solar access to each of these neighborhood parks. I am aware there's a notation in the current plan that says that not all of these, uh, parks can be, uh, protected from tall towers, there's only about four or five of them. Uh, I haven't, I, I just can't follow that line of logic. It seems more prudent to me to allow a little bit of shading on a larger park than blanking out, uh, a small, uh, neighborhood of this, of this, uh, sort. On the development, uh, design itself, uh, there's a requirement, uh, of, uh, of consolidation that, uh, four hundred ninety-five square feet dedication be dedicated from the lane. Uh, that is a dedication that occurs with any subdivision or assembly of land. There's no compensation required under the Land Title Act of B.C., nor the city's subdivision bylaw. Um, however, the, uh, site area that is being proposed is based on the gross density before dedication.
Sorry, Jim, you are out of time.
So there's, if I could just, uh, we'll try to wrap up shortly. So there's an extra twenty-eight hundred square feet.
Sorry, Jim, you are out of time, yeah. You're actually thirty seconds over.
Okay, my apologies, um.
Thank you, you are well articulated. Thank you so much for speaking to council.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, speaker number ten is Simon Vermette. Yeah, please go ahead.
Good evening. Um, thank you for hearing from me. Uh, my name is Simone Vermette. I am opposed to this project as it stands. Like other speakers, I also live on that block and I know most of my neighbors and I've lived there for twenty-eight years. Um, most of the houses have been lovingly restored, but you've heard all of that already. Um, we're agreeable to six to eight stories of a, you know, properly-designed building to fit into the neighborhood, but what is being proposed is totally out of scale. Um, it is also going to shadow the Davis Houses, which are all heritage-protected on Tenth, as well as all the Coach Houses, which butt up almost to the property line and there's not enough setback to give these people any light at all. They will be in the dark almost all the time. Um, as for density, I know for a fact that for each family lot on our block, there's at least four families in each of those lots. So there's already quite a bit of density, um, in our neighborhood. There is no lane for garbage or car exits, um, the traffic congestion will be unbelievable. It already is. For one, with everything that's going on around the neighborhood and because we are between Twelfth and Broadway, Yukon is closed and heaven knows when the construction happens around here, they're all go, they're all diverting right now to Alberta Street. It's just chaos. And it's chaos on our street as well. When you've got delivery trucks coming one way and you've got the garbage truck coming the other way, there's nowhere to go. Like there's, I don't know how many times we've watched a standoff, is who's going to back up? And this is continuous every day. And if you add on this proposed development, which exits onto Eleventh, where the garbage trucks will also be going, we already have a lot of those, uh, because they're going to the church as well as our locations, and then you have the vehicles coming out and the delivery vehicles coming in, it's, it's chaos. So is the parking. When the church is in session on Sundays, there is no parking in our area. They're already parking on Twelfth and in surrounding blocks because their parking lot is full, which is great. I mean, it's a well-attended church, it has a little daycare and has a number of things that they have going. I think City Hall people also park in their parking lot, they pay the, they pay the church to park there, but I mean, it's a well-attended church, it's well-managed. So we need, for one thing, traffic control in our area. So one of the ladies here who's observing, she lives at Manitoba and Eleventh, and the little, you know, do not enter traffic calming that's there, car after car after car, I yell at them and the cop cars are going there too, so are the garbage trucks and the delivery trucks. No one pays attention to that. It either needs to be cut off and just the residents of that little block, you know, like, and then our back alley is being used as like an alternative to Twelfth when it backs up. So then you add a hundred and sixty-five units with very little parking and even though, yes, we're going to be between two transit stations, I've lived there for twenty-eight years, when the Canada Line went in on, in twenty-ten, um, I do take the Canada Line and I walk a lot, but I have a car and so does just about everybody on our street, has at least one vehicle and most of them are on the street. So when our visitors come to visit us, there's very little parking. So usually have to move our car from the back with a sticker so that they can visit, you know, within that, otherwise they'd be ticketed. So then you add all these people who are going to have cars in this hundred and sixty-five unit building, and don't tell me they're not going to because they're going to, where are they going to park? We don't even have parking now. So that's my say, as well as everything else that the prior people have talked about, about heritage. I love my neighborhood and I don't mind having a six, maybe even eight-story building, but what's being proposed as eighteen stories, that's totally out of line. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker number eleven is Adina Marks. On the phone? Not on the line, okay. All right, speaker number twelve is Jason Exner. Yeah, so Jason, before you start, as a procedure question, I need to ask you if you are resident of Vancouver.
Yes, I am, I live right across the street.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have a presentation that, uh, I didn't get in by five P.M. yesterday, but it apparently was emailed to each of you. I'd please ask you to pull that up because it's, uh, it details what I'm about to talk about. Um, the first, the first slide, uh, is the application proposal, uh, front cover. Is everybody able to pull that up?
Uh, yes. Two minutes recess, okay, so we need to take a two minutes recess so we can have the, your presentation circulated to everyone.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Seven thirty-one, we're going to be back. Seven thirty-one, we're gonna be back. Alright, so I think everyone has the presentation in your inbox. Okay, Jason, you can go ahead.
Thank you, council, for letting me speak today. So the first slide of my presentation is the application booklet cover for the development. This is the promotional picture that they want you to believe is gonna occur. I just have one question for Mr. Chan. Mr. Chan, is this image deceitful? Yes or no?
Sorry, we can't answer the question.
I'm sorry. I thought Mr. Chan could answer. Well, I'll answer it for it. It is deceitful, and I've let the city know that, and I've let Haven Developments know that. You can just click to the next slide. I'd ask the developers if they know where these houses are, but clearly they don't, or more importantly, they don't care. Click to the next slide. This will again show you the development sign, and click one more time. The reason is, houses pop up. What they've done is they've literally erased our homes. They pretended we don't exist. They want you to believe that we don't exist. And we're here to tell you that we do exist. If you click one more time, should be on the development picture with a number of things showing on it. I'll just go through this with you a little bit. The ovals are all homes that the developer has literally erased. They pretend we don't exist. This is not an artist conception. This is an architect's deception. As some of the previous speakers have noted, there's multiple heritage homes there. There is the Clark House, which literally will have a concrete wall beat from the back of its home. The Ladner House beside Major Matthews Park, they pretend it doesn't exist all over this application. The homes, if you can see up on the left where I said West Eleventh, or sorry, West Twelfth garages, they tried to deceive you into believing that those are the homes on the front of West Eleventh. They're trying to deceive you into thinking that there's much more room around this development than there is. All of those rings are homes that they've, that should be visible, that they've eliminated. There is not one single home for our entire block. This development is at one twenty-one West Eleventh, yet they can't show one single home on that entire block. That is nineteen buildings they pretend don't exist. When people tell you what they are, believe them. They are deceitful. Major Matthews Park is mentioned twenty-six times in fifty-six pages of their application booklet. Major Matthews Park is the crown jewel of their application. They want you to believe they're improving it. On page fifty-six, I believe it is, they say, they have a picture and they say, "Our proposal is gonna invite deeper, make a deeper space of Major Matthews Park. It will make it more inviting." It's not making it more inviting. They're taking five meters of the back of that park to put concrete steps. Let's go to the next slide. They don't care about property lines. This is from their own booklet. This is my side of the street. I live at one-one-two West Eleventh, directly across from this proposal. They should be embarrassed to have an image like this. You can see where they show the property lines, it runs through the middle of my house. How embarrassing is that? This shows the actual property lines in red. Next slide, please. This image comes from the promotional video, comes from at the forty-four second mark. This is looking from my house directly across. Inside the black square is their so-called arcade pathway. The red property line shows the property line between this development and Major Matthews, or in the Ladner House. Those people walking down the steps there, or down a supposed pathway, I call them running man and friends. Go to the next slide. This is the reality of what that really looks like. That circle, they're running through the Ladner House backyard. They're stealing that property. They're pretending it is theirs. It's not theirs. Next slide. This running man, he's even on the initial promotional image. It's like they can't control their lying. Next slide.
Uh, sorry, Jason, you are out of time.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's help. And if you have time, look through the rest of the proposal, or my presentation, it's self-explanatory. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. We receive your presentation. We're gonna review. Thank you so much. The next speaker is Michelle Spencer. On the phone? Miss one? We don't have that on the, okay. Speaker thirteen is, uh, oh, Natasha Exner. Okay, Natasha Exner.
I don't have much to say. I just want you to take a look at this neighborhood and see for yourself if this development is fitting with the neighborhood. It's been a treasured part of our children's life, and it's been preserved for decades with strict rules put against anything that would interfere with maintaining its integrity. People come there from work on a stressful day and just walk through that street, West Henth, and along West Eleventh, and there's something about being set back in time. It's almost like going to a museum. It sets you back and it is very calming. It's a very calm neighborhood to begin with. And I just challenge you to look at the photos yourself and walk through the neighborhood and see if this monstrous building that looks like an office building belongs in our neighborhood. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. So the next speaker is Michelle Spencer. Online? Disconnect. Okay, we're gonna, speaker, the next speaker is Sarah MacLeod. Please go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks, counselor, chair, council, staff, applicant, speakers. Please, please, please listen. Please ask questions. It's a really powerful tool that you guys have to ask questions, and it's really important and, I've said both of those things before, and I'm trying to figure out what the third thing is because things happen in threes. And maybe it's walk from, you know, the pub, like, you know, like, listen, ask questions, walk, learn, move forward together, talk to neighbors, maybe it's, yeah, anyways, you get the point. I'll speak quickly to the natural assets. Chucker. So there's five city trees that will be retained. There are ten onsite trees proposed for removal due to conflict with the building footprint and several trees along the property lines. Maybe it's one of the neighbor's property lines. Agreements with neighbors are required, okay, for the removal of the shaded trees. Yeah, because like, so with their proposal, there'll be sixteen trees, they need nine, sorry, nine, by bylaw unless they get, apply for permits to remove. And when things don't, are removed without permits, sorry, where are my papers at? How do we enforce this? How do we deal with it? I answered my own question from the last one, so I'm just learning as well. Thanks for sticking with me. So no person shall, in contravention to this bylaw, cut or damage a tree on a site to the extent that, in the opinion of the director of planning, is or will become a hazardous tree, has lost its characteristic appearance, is or will become diseased, or is dead or will die prematurely. So we're removing them, they gotta deal with how to replace them. What about with the shadow thing, all the ones that need replacing on their neighbor's lawns? Because I wish Steve was hearing those way better than me about the shadows, but clearly just looking at it, right, like it completely ignores the existing people there. Because those trees, if we count them, like, will die. They will die because of the shade. It's just plain spoken. So it is the director of planning may order a person in breach of this section to apply for a tree permit to replace any trees, but yeah, but like, will they die because of the shadow? And they're doing it on the property, but not the others that they are causing death to. Referred to in such an order fourteen days, yada yada, be, take all necessary, all action necessary to obtain such a tree permit. I'm sure the city said before that they don't put the city ahead of themselves, like privilege-wise for certain things. I don't want to get into the mud about it, but I'm like, it says here that you can ask for those trees. Put it ahead, you know? Do more. And then also, the director of planning may order the person to plant the replacement tree in accordance with the permit. There's volunteers to do that. It could be you and me together. A neighbor offered me a shovel today to replant one of their seedlings at a property that will eventually have their trees on that property die from shadows of other projects past of rezoning, not yet past application form, but we see evidence of people. Well, because then, right, they don't have to, if you have money, you don't have to apply for the permits. Because then it just goes in the lease, I don't know, the terms, but you guys find a way to get the money for these things, I know. And everyone else who can't afford to do it keeps their trees. Maybe they keep them because they love them, doesn't cost them anything, does better things for their area. So sure, there's the money and, you know, I think by law, by law, you will replace them, you have to, but where? Where will you replace them? Ready to start digging? Yeah, just ask the questions. I mean, you really can't pass it. Ask questions that, you know, gives you new information, that you gotta talk about it, right? Like, shouldn't pass it.
Hey, thank you, Sarah. Okay, so are there any other additional speakers? Okay, so I'll do the third call first. This is the third and the final call for speakers. If there are any speaker for this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by the participant code one zero six one four four five pound before the close of the speakers list. The phone number will be posted on X and made available on the live stream. If there are additional speakers in the council chamber, please come forward to the podium. You speak already. Yeah, you are, you can't. No, you can't ask questions at this process. Okay, are there any additional speakers? Alright, so we will now take five minutes recess for additional speakers. And we're gonna be back at seven fifty-one. Oh my goodness. They're all online? Alright. One more. Alright, so we have three more additional speakers online. Okay, the first speaker is Chris.
Hello.
Yeah, Chris, can I have your last name, please?
Wilks, W I L K S.
Okay. And also, can I ask you if you're a resident of Vancouver?
Yes, I'm a resident of Vancouver.
Please go ahead, you have five minutes.
I'm very opposed to the rezoning for this project. I live adjacent to the property in question at the Vladner House. In addition to everything the former speakers have said, I really want to highlight the issues with the sewer infrastructure in our neighborhood. Earlier in the year, this year, there is a blockage which caused flooding in numerous homes on the street. I live in the garden level unit next door. So unfortunately, when things happen, the sewage will back up into my tub and toilet, which is very unpleasant. And because of the blockage we had earlier in the year, we had defecate in a bucket for a day, which is very unpleasant, as you can imagine. I can't imagine a 180-foot tower beside our house flushing all of that water and waste down into the street level. How that will affect the other homes. And I know there is a lot of damage that was caused because of the sewer infrastructure issues in our street. So I don't think this is a reasonable proposal to add a house of this size into our, sorry, a building of this size and nature into our neighborhood. In addition, with Major Matthews Park, it looks like with this development, they just plan on using part of this park as part of their landscaping. This park is unique to the neighborhood. The neighbors and residents love having the park nearby. It's a nice, quiet place. To have this park now turned into part of what the building looks like in their plans is part of their building proposal, I think, is inconsiderate of the neighborhood and the city of Vancouver. In addition, living next door to a development of this size, I'm at garden level, so I'm a couple of feet under the ground. My windows open up a couple of feet above the ground. I can't imagine just the dirt, the debris, the noise. I can't even imagine how construction trucks would get down this street to build something like this. I think that whole plan is ill-conceived, and I think it needs to not be approved. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Councillor Kirby, do you have a question for Chris? Yeah, Chris, you have one question from councillor. Please go ahead, councillor.
Yes.
Yeah, hi there. Thanks for speaking to council. I just wanted to clarify. I just wanted to clarify. What was the reason for the sewer challenges that you experienced? And have they been addressed? Or what happened? And what were you advised?
Yes, so I believe it was in January this year where the sewer line, city sewer line clogged up. Initially thinking it was, you know, a home issue. It was not. And contacted the city. And the city had to come out with their, you know, mega trucks to blast through whatever was happening in the street line. But I heard from numerous neighbors in the neighborhood that they had also had the same sort of flooding in their bottom level units in their homes, which caused quite a bit of damage. And for two weeks, there was restoration trucks and vans on our street dealing with those messes.
Okay, and was that an isolated incident? Or has that happened on more than one occasion?
It has happened. It has happened. I've been in this home for seven years, and this has happened a couple of, at least three times now that I can think of. So there's definitely something wrong with the sewage and the infrastructure in general. But to put a tower in on top of that would just be a nightmare.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you speaking. I'll be asking some follow-up.
It must be a matter of public record somewhere with this.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate you speaking. I'll be asking some follow-up questions of staff. But thanks for speaking to council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. That's your question. The next speaker is Melissa, online.
Yes, hello. My name is Melissa Nauman. I am a resident of Vancouver. And in fact, I live on West 11th.
Please go ahead, Melissa. You have five minutes.
Okay, I've lived in this neighborhood for over 10 years now. And I just want to voice my complete opposition to this proposed development on our street. A lot of my neighbors have spoken out very eloquently and with a lot of detail. And I felt inspired to call in just to also provide my voice. I have provided comments in writing on several occasions. But I felt like they were not adequately captured by the presentation given by the city clerk. So I just also wanted to speak to council directly and just state that I think a tower that is 18 stories tall is completely out of line for our small street and the heritage nature of our neighborhood. I'm not opposed to development, but I think a development of such size and height would be better suited on one of the main arteries, on 12th or on Broadway or on Camby, where, you know, there is still ample space for such development. Our street, as you've heard, is too narrow, has unstable infrastructure. There's a lot of additional traffic in our neighborhood since certain streets have been closed off. And I just don't see how such a huge building with so many more additional cars would fit onto our small street. It's already quite congested. And a lot of speakers have spoken about the heritage nature of our neighborhood, as you well know, since you're also here on a daily basis. But I think to propose such a, I should say insensitive and plain and kind of just generic building that lacks any kind of character or heritage is somewhat offensive to those of us who live here because of the beauty and accessibility of our neighborhood. So I would ask that the lack of consideration given by the developers and the architect should, I don't know, speak to how seriously they take building something so huge and lacking of character in this neighborhood. And then finally, I also want to advocate for council to take a more measured approach to developing on, you know, developing on these small streets. As I said, I'm not opposed to having these larger buildings on the main arteries. But on small streets, I feel like we should consider having, you know, smaller buildings of six stories or seven stories to see how that goes. I think currently, the largest building on our street is just about three stories. And to go from three to 18 seems like very ill-considered and doesn't take into account, you know, the traffic. It doesn't take into account whether the infrastructure can handle it. So I think we need to kind of ramp up a little bit more slowly on some of these more narrow and older streets to see whether the city's infrastructure and our access to these neighborhoods would be impacted by building something so massive. So thanks very much for the opportunity to speak with you. And I look forward to you opposing this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. The next speaker is Jennifer, online.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Jennifer. Can I ask you your last name, please?
Sure, my last name's Levitt, L-E-A-V-E, is in Victor, I-T-T. And I'm a resident of Vancouver.
Thank you. You have five minutes. Please go ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I live in the neighborhood, and I'm a mother of three and expecting my fourth child. And I just wanted to speak to the family. I'm opposed to this project, and I just wanted to speak to the family impact of this. So firstly, as others have spoken, Major Matthews Park is the only green space in this square city block and is a refuge for families in the area. It is the only place based in walkable distance for children aged two to five. And this park will be shadowed by this building from the month of March to November and after 4:00 PM, which is when most people use the park. That's when kids are out of school and out of daycare and, you know, parents are home from work. As well, five meters, as other people have said, five meters of this park is being appropriated by the developer to create steps down from the development into the park. It's already quite a small park. So I think although the Broadway Plan, like, had an exception for the shadowing of this park, I think the time period that this specific building shadows the park is significant. As well as others have said, because there is no back lane between West 10th and West 11th, as there is on many other areas, as there are on many other streets in this area, cars now have to come out of the building across the sidewalk. This is a very high-traffic bike and pedestrian area. West 10th is a dedicated bike lane. There's many people walking here all the time. And in addition, the additional traffic on a single-lane street creates dangers for bikers and pedestrians. And I think that a traffic management plan needs to be shown by the developers and the cities prior to approving this rezoning plan. I think that much better development sites exist in the area that have a back laneway to avoid cars going over the sidewalk, such as exists between, for example, West 11th and West 12th. The other piece I wanted to speak from, from a family's perspective. My family, all three of my children sleep in one room. We live in 1,000 square feet. And I would say we probably couldn't live in any less. The three-bedroom apartments that are being proposed are under the livable city guidelines proposed by the city of Vancouver and adopted by other organizations like the World Health Organization. The minimum livable square feet for a three-bedroom family home is suggested at 900 square feet, and they're proposing 811 square feet. I can't remember exactly how much the two-bedroom area, but it's also below the recommended amount. And this, I think, probably goes to show that families won't live in the family-designated space that this developer has proposed. As others have mentioned, the community services in this area, especially the schools, are well over capacity. In my daughter's kindergarten class, there was 120 students. Oh, sorry, one second, Sophie. There was 120 students for 40 spots. Those 80 students that did, who are, live in catchment and did not get in already are then go to other schools in the neighborhood. The major overflow is General Wolf. Previously, walkable schools like Mount Pleasant Elementary School and Nightingale Elementary School are now also not accepting overflow students as they're also at capacity. I know this is out of the purview of Vancouver City Council, but I think that City Council, working in collaboration with the Vancouver School Board, needs to show a plan for the kids that live in this area. And so I'm hoping that council will consider these safety concerns and consider the benefits that Major Matthews Park provides to the area and consider at least deferring the rezoning application until more consensus or the developer can speak to these issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. All right, so clerk, do we have any additional speaker online or in person? Okay, thank you. Seeing no further speakers, the speakers list is now closed. Seeing there are few or no public comments received after 2:00 PM today, I'm now closing the reception of the public comments as well. Okay, does applicant team have any closing comments?
No, we don't.
Thank you. Does staff have any closing comments?
No closing comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Only to mention that there's a yellow memo to be moved with this application.
Thank you. Does council have any final question for staff? Councillor Kirby, yeah?
Yeah, I have several. And I'm going to start off with, maybe it's not a fair question, but I'll reserve your comments. I was going to ask how often applicants decline opening and closing comments? Unless staff would like to answer that. I'll come back to that in my remarks later. Can I get some perspective from staff with respects to the sewer issues that were mentioned on this street and what the existing sewer situation is in terms of its age, capacity, and what is required of the applicant? Given that we had one speaker that referenced that they had had a situation that sounded a bit dire that had happened several times in several years?
Thank you, Councillor Kirby Young, for the question. We don't have engineering staff directly, but I did review some of the engineering reviews. Our preliminary reviews did not indicate that there was a sewer capacity issue. But it's something that staff will look into further. We'll also note that as part of Broadway Plan, when the entire Broadway Plan was done, it was sewer capacity and the upgrades were identified right across the entire Broadway Plan area by engineering.
What are the obligations of the applicant with respects to sewer capacity for this project?
There are no sewer upgrade requirements included in this application. I will note that if the sewers are surcharging, that's not necessarily on this particular applicant. Like, they're not built, they're not causing it. But like, once again, I said, staff will take these comments back.
A follow-up question. Procedurally, when we have rezoning applications like this, do we have a process where we sort of cross-check or check in with departments like engineering so that we can identify if there have been issues in and around a particular proposed rezoning site?
So as I mentioned, yes, there, as part of our rezoning application review, we do check with sewers. We check with sewer, we check with water, we check with transportation. And sewers in the preliminary modeling did not identify a surcharging issue with this site.
Okay, so the fact, so I guess, I guess my question is to help sort of the, work through some of the public feedback we've heard, is would discharge three times like that not be considered an issue that would make it into a report? Or would it not have come up? Or how, or is that not considered a serious enough level? Is it related to something else? And why are we not having engineering staff here on a number of these projects that seem to have a very specific engineering component, whether it's questions around lanes, access, sewer capacity?
I recognize that there's been certainly a more flurry of questions recently around these things. Engineering has provided some of the FAQs to staff. But recognizing engineering's time, they want to be judicious about which applications, which public hearings that they do attend.
Okay, procedurally, if councillor are feeling that we're not able to get information that would help us to process through some of the feedback that we've had, do we have a mechanism? I was going to ask this question generally, to defer an application until we can hear from engineering, for example? Because I feel like I'm asking the question in the context that I feel like we have feedback that comes out from the public. And then as a councillor, I don't have access to get information to address some of the feedback we've heard prior to making a decision.
I appreciate the question, Templar, from Director of Rezoning. So certainly, we do undertake those reviews thoroughly with engineering. As my colleague mentioned, the reviews indicated that this application wouldn't trigger an upgrade. The sewer is already separated. So if there are sewer upgrade requirements, those are typically dealt with not by the development, but by the city. So staff will report back through engineering to provide then the opportunity to review and provide further info. If council does want to hear that information directly from staff, then you can refer this application back to staff or refer it to a later date so that council can receive that information at a reconvened time.
Thank you very much. I will take that under advisement. My next question, switching gears, is that there's been a number of suggestions from different speakers we've heard tonight about a six-story would be better or an eight. Can you just delineate between the obligation that council would have under the provincial regulations to approve? That we could not, for example, turn down density and put in a low-rise townhouse or multiplex here because we would be bound by the provincial TOA guidelines? And can you just be explicit about what those would be for this particular location?
Under the TOA, under TOA legislation, this is in a tier three, so it's an eight-story, three FSR. However, the council has adopted a TOA rezoning policy where it says if there is an existing plan in place, the existing plan is the one to, is the one to consider. Furthermore, the existing plan, the Broadway Plan, allows higher than what the TOA legislation would permit.
So council, in receiving this application, needs to be guided by its own current policy, correct? Chair, can I move for a second round in case we need?
Second there? Second by Councillor Claussen? If he were to say, yeah, I'll pause in there. Motion carries. All right, so Councillor Frye?
We're doing a second round, right?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so, yeah, and I appreciate that this is tier three under the TOA. But under the Broadway Plan, this is MRTB, which says, I think, up to 150 feet. Is that? I might have to come back on to. I've got too many windows open. You know what? Let me get back to that one. Just for greater articulation, just because I think there has been some confusion around the renderings and stuff. Now typically, these rezoning renderings are not as detailed as an actual development rendering. Can you just walk through that for the benefit of some of the comments that we've heard?
Certainly, it's the renderings that we've seen are intended to give a general idea of the massing, the form, the relationships. It's also a question for the applicant as to how much money they're wanting to spend in terms of the level of detail when they don't have certainty through rezoning. But staff judged that it was sufficient to allow an analysis of the relationships that are happening.
Yeah, so this is a broad strokes massing kind of thing as opposed to a detailed rendering?
Correct, yeah. At rezoning stage, the focus is on the building envelope. And then at DPS, they And then at D P S stage, we go further to the details. However, on this case, given the context, we have a list of conditions regarding what we are expect to see at the next stage.
Right, and so in those conditions in Appendix B, a couple that jump out to me that also kind of were were touched upon by folks was removing the encroachments on Major Matthews Park, softening and improving the interface, which are conditions in Appendix B. Could you walk through that a little bit? Just again, for the benefit of folks who have come and spent the evening to to speak to us about this, I think those need to be articulated.
Yes, uh, thank you for the question. So yes, while the original application did show an encroachment into Major Matthews Park, as part of the conditions after after review by staff and park board, we said, uh, you have to remove all those encroachments. So you you can't build onto city land, so those will be removed. There are conditions that also talk about the interface between this private property and the future park. Should they wish to provide access, like, uh, they'll have to do any sort of the grading changes on the private property themselves. And also, if there is access, we have a condition in here that says you have to provide access to everybody. So it's not just for this private development and their residents to get into the park. But through an S R W, the public could walk through the development to access the Major Matthews Park from Eleventh.
Right, now, and those are, I mean, those are not insignificant changes to what's been proposed during this public hearing format. Are these enough to trigger like a new public hearing? Are these big game changers as far as what's the conditions on the on the D P are?
We don't believe so. These are, these are conditions that we're telling the applicant, you need to do these things and then submit your D P plans to make sure that they accommodate that.
Okay, so under the, I don't know what my time is. Uh, under the M R T B, uh, I think the prescription is, and I thought the the actual foot height was different. But it it's, it does talk about a five point five F S R, and this is coming in at, I think, a five point eight.
So under the Broadway Plan, there is a provision where uh additional density, and that's a point three F S R bump, may be granted for applications to include ground, ground floor retail or childcare. So this applicant's gone for a ground floor retail.
Right, so that is uh, is that a conditional approval or is that?
Uh, that is a policy, and that, and the applicant has taken advantage of that policy to to propose five point eight.
Interesting, okay, I'm gonna come back on, thanks.
Okay, thanks. Counselor Dominado?
Uh, thanks, Chair. Um, I was gonna ask about the encroachment of the park, but um Counselor Frye has already asked about that. Um, I just want to circle back. There's been a number of references to um existing heritage homes in the neighborhood and impacts of the proposed uh development. And um now, some of these homes, I understand, are on the Heritage Register. I'm not sure if they're all the same category on the register. Um, but is there anything within that that in terms of uh new building impacting a heritage home? I know there's, and I, to the point that I know one resident mentioned is that there are some limitations on what you can do when you're on the register and you've but can staff just speak to that in terms of within the heritage framework? What a new proposed development, what it means if there's a, in terms of implications for those existing sites?
Okay, thank you very much for the question. Um, I just want to note that rezon, in, at the rezoning stage, we're not the the full design, the materiality, color and all that. It's not a baked design. We're looking at land use height and density. Um, there are elements of the current design, such as the four story podium, that kind of seek to 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 respond to the existing context. Nonetheless, there is further design development that can be done uh at the D P stage on this project. Now, with respect to the surrounding houses, uh, it does not, it does not remove the protections from the surrounding houses. It does not, um, yes, there may be some shadows that cast, but the the surrounding houses can, they maintain, they're, they're still on the Heritage Register. They still have the protections if they are designated.
Thank you, that was well put. I'm tired, and so I didn't explain that very well. Thank you for answering that. Um, and then, out of curiosity, obviously, um, uh, we, these applicants, they, they come forward with their proposal. Was there any conversation about the built form and 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 any back and forth between staff and the applicant about what actually is coming? And I recognize it's not fully baked in terms of the design, but um, any conversation about something different? To the point that I think some of the residents have raised?
Sorry, are you asking whether we have talked to the applicant about building something smaller?
Yeah, has there been any, was there any conversation or is it just this is sort of what we're driving towards as we'd like to see this height, this density?
This is what the applicant has asked for.
I'll pause there for now, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Uh, I have a couple of questions here as well. So this one has uh three levels of underground parking. Only sixty parking spaces for one hundred sixty five units. Uh, so what is our mitigation strategy in terms of the parking space?
Thank you for the question. So um, as of January first, uh, twenty twenty four, our council uh amended the parking bylaw. There are no longer any minimum parking requirements across the city for the principal uses. So it is up to the applicant, the market, to determine how many spaces they wish to provide. That being said, uh, and it's been said before this evening, this this um project is well cited to reduce its parking uh it for, to reduce parking and travel, travel demand by vehicles. It's eight hundred meter, within eight hundred meters of a future and current Skytrain station. It's it's close to a bike pass, it's close to a frequent transit along um uh West Tenth. So uh, engineering has looked at this, uh, they've looked at uh, a traffic study was not required, but they did look at this and they said, you know, peak hour demand is probably about thirty or, it might generate thirty or so vehicles. That's about one to two vehicles a minute or so. That is not a concern for, it's not a significant impact to the road network.
Okay, so from the parking, parking perspective, this aligns with our existing policy?
This aligns with the park, they will have to comply with the parking bylaw at the D P stage, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Uh, also related, there's some concern regarding the traffic in these particular areas. It's already very crowded with all the cars, very narrow street. What is the traffic management plan for this application?
Um, so as I just previously mentioned, uh, it's not a, it, engineering does not anticipate a a big impact to the road network from this development. There are also lots of bicycle parking spaces very close to the, close to bike routes. Um, in terms of the actual offsite upgrades, there are speed humps that are proposed to slow down traffic uh along the stretch of Eleventh Avenue that are required as part of this application's offsite upgrades.
Okay, so there is a a back lane on the Tenth Avenue, which is being actively used by the psych, uh, by the, by the cyclist. Is there any impact on that back lane? When we have so many vehicles perhaps cut through the uh Tenth Avenue?
Uh, as I mentioned, we don't anticipate a a significant impact to the road network from this uh, from this application.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the other questions, I think you mentioned about the heritage, heritage register questions. But from the urban designs perspective, because thi- this uh street has so many of those heritage buildings. And then we have this high risk building uh just in this neighborhood. What will be the impact on the urban, on on the urban design perspective? What are the considerations for the urban design?
Yep, so the proposal itself has some uh measures to address the heritage context, including the four story podium that provided transition from tower to the heritage houses. And then in addition to that, the street trees along the um front street, uh, staff uh has conditions to retain all those trees to keep the existing street escaped there. And then in addition, we ask for further setback at the under, for the underground structure to secure those trees. And uh, as my colleague mentioned, this is at the rezoning stage. We also have conditions for the D P to uh, to uh to further detail the design to um better fit the con, heritage context at the podium level.
On podium level, okay. Hey, Josh?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, just, Joshua, General Manager, Planning, Urban Design and Sustainability. If you may, uh, I might just add a couple additional comments with respect to heritage and urban design. Um, an additional piece of information, I I think that's useful, is that uh uh staff are about to publish a about eighty page resource guide uh to accompany Broadway Plan to help uh guide activity in terms of uh design of heritage, uh respectful and understanding of the different contexts of the neighborhoods throughout a Broadway Plan that might include best practices or in terms of design response, traditional materiality, things like that within different neighborhoods within Broadway Plan. Uh, the other thing I might offer as well, uh, to reiterate what's been said, this is a rezoning stage. There's further work to do through design development, conditions to influence that as well. Uh, and we also uh would offer that a project like this would be appropriate to uh go through Urban Design Panel, given the uh heritage context, which resides to further refine the design.
Thank you, Joshua. I'm out of time, thank you. Uh, Counselor Claussen?
Uh, Chair, I'm going to, a lot of the questions I was gonna ask, ask by my, my colleagues here today, I'm gonna reserve for my comments uh to the end and uh not ask any questions at this point, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor. Counselor Dominado, second round? Oh, first round?
I, oh, I don't, I may still be on my first round if I
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to circle back on um comments, questions that were raised about shadowing of the park. Um, could staff comment on that in the context of the Broadway Plan policies?
Thank you for the question. Um. Yes, there is going to be some shadowing of the park. Uh, but Broadway Plan recognized that some, for some smaller parks, shadowing even for more mot, smaller scale developments would be inevitable. And it was, and certain parks such as Major, Major Matthews were identified as saying we may not be able to uphold our solar, our our solar policies for these particular parks. So it was recognized that there is a constraint, it's, it's a trade, it is a trade off. And that trade off was made through the policy to say, certain parks, uh, we may not be able to do the full, uh, we may not have our full solar policies applicable.
Can, can you refresh for me like the extent of what shadowing we're talking about in this context with this proposal?
So uh, according to this proposal, by approximately two P M, starting at the equinoxes is when the shadowing, around two P M was when the shadowing would begin on Major Matthews Park.
Yeah, and for how long?
Uh, it will go through to the rest of the day.
Okay, um, okay, thank you.
Counselor Frye?
Oh, um, yeah, going back to this, this retail podium. Um, uh, and I, I mean, I was clear during the Broadway Plan that I preferred the tower and the park kind of model for these reasons on these narrower side streets. Does this project work without that retail podium bringing it more in line with the five point five F S R? Um, or is that too significant a change to prescribe at this point?
I don't have the exact calculations in front of me, but by my estimates, it would take more than just removing the podium to to regain, to to bring down to five point five. Um, it would have to go up in height as well to 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 meet that. The podium is more than just point three in space.
Okay, and
We'll just simply add to that as well. If council were to look for something like that, would, that would be more uh appropriate to refer back to staff for that direction.
I mean, we we did hear from a number of the speakers that we don't, they didn't need any more coffee shops or whatever in the, in the neighborhood, so I I take that under advisement. I see I'm running out of time, but I'll uh leave it at that.
There's a second round, yeah. Uh, Counselor Kirby Young?
Uh, yeah, thanks. I have four questions I'm gonna try to rattle through quickly, so uh, quick answers appreciated, um, on the quick, on the easy ones. Um, so did I hear shadowing on the park from two P M every day, three hundred sixty five days a year?
Approximately, yes.
Like light shadowing or like it's shadowed?
Uh, it begins shadowing the park at two P M and then the, and then the shadow will continue to to sweep across the park after two P M.
I see. Um. Two, I know that we have engineering staff apparently on the line now. I wonder if we can go, is that correct? Uh, I wonder if we can go to that and see if we can get a bit more perspective on the um reported sewage overflow issues in connection to sewage requirements on this street and with this building. Do we have someone available now?
We do have engineering on the line. Would you like to repeat your question just quickly for?
Uh, yes, it's with respects to, do, can, does the staff have knowledge of the reported uh three overflows and backups that a speaker spoke to? Uh, is there a current sewage um issue on this street? And is there anything that is needed in engineering's estimation uh in addition for an additional development on the street?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Kirby Young. It's Charles Joseph from Engineering Services. Um, so we do consider uh public complaints, three one one complaints and our records for sewer backups when we complete our sewer review. In the case of this site, when we completed the review, uh, our model did acknowledge that there is existing surcharging in the storm sewer system. Um, but that the site itself was not um causing an attributable increase to the system. Recognizing that the storm sewer is only, uh, was only installed in nineteen seventy two, uh, we will look to other methods as opposed to upgrading uh this fairly recent gray infrastructure uh to try to take the pressure off of the storm sewer system.
Okay, just keeping moving for time. So you're saying you don't think the extra residents will add? Issue will be there regardless of whether the extra residents are not, and you will be taking mitigation measures because of the known issue? Is that a fair reflection?
Uh, it is a separated system, and so the additional sanitary flow will not impact the existing storm surcharging issue in the system.
Okay, thanks. Um, if the, following up on Counselor Frye's question, if the commercial uh component was reviewed, can that be an amendment or does that essentially trigger referral back to staff in a new public hearing, for example?
That would be a significant amount, a significant enough change, we would recommend the referral back to staff.
And therefore a new public hearing because it would be materially different or no?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Um, and then my last question through you, Chair, is a procedural one that I've never asked in my entire time on council, but I'm uh going to ask for it now. Uh, and I'm gonna look to the clerks more, perhaps more intimate knowledge, hopefully with procedure bylaw than mine, though mine's pretty good. Um, we didn't have a chance to hear from the applicant at all tonight, either in opening comments or in closing. Does council have any ability through the procedure bylaw to ask the applicant to speak to their own application and comment if they refuse, if they have turned that option down? Or is it entirely at the will of the applicant if they choose to actually speak to their own application? And it's, I mean, that's a point of procedure, so maybe you want to pause my time?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes. Yeah. Let us know if we need to take a recess to figure it out. Too many recesses, okay, let's take a two minutes recess. Gonna be back at eight thirty one. Gonna be back at eight thirty-one. Okay, so, Councilor Kirby Young, we do have a answer for your question. Let's go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you Chair, so, uh, Councilor Kirby Young, in response to your question, under the Order of Business for Public Hearings, which is section, uh, thirteen point thirteen of the procedure by law. Um, the only opportunity to ask questions of the applicant is before the Chair makes the second call for speakers. So at the point where we are in the public hearing, there is no, uh, ability to ask questions of the applicant at this point.
Okay, do you have more question, Counselor? Okay, thanks. Councilor Frye?
Thanks Chair, and this might be more of a conceptual question. Um, as far as the obligation for the accuracy of the materials that go through the public open house and in this presentation. I'm the guy who had the presentation, I, I don't, obviously wasn't projected on screen, the running guy, the running man presentation. It does seem, we did have the benefit of looking at it as he was describing it, it does seem. Inaccurate in places, and I'm curious, because I mean, a, a lot of the frustration with this project that I'm hearing is based on the, on, on renderings, on assumptions, on. Property lines, on impacts, on, you know, the running man going through a totally different property. How? How important is that accuracy in us making a final decision on a rezoning when we have these kind of presentations? And I, I realize that this has gone through public open house and the booklet and everything, but. As we're looking at this referral report and as we're hearing from folks who are directly contrasting what's been presented to them and to us and saying, well, that's not accurate. And indeed, maybe it's not accurate. Can we make a, a, a decision based on inaccurate material?
Uh, thank you for the question, council's being asked to make a decision on a land use, a height, a density, and the recommendations contained in the, in the report. Uh, staff do the reviews of the application, we go through the application package. We do rely on the applicant to provide the best accuracy or their best, best foot forward in many of these situations. Um, to this, I would say staff are looking a lot to the, the architectural plans. We do, we, we scrutinize or go through the architectural plans in details because that's what tells us the numbers that we need to use here. That, uh, if renderings are less accurate than ideal, that is a little bit unfortunate. But the staff's review is, is highly based on the architectural plans.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I do, to the earlier point I had about like, what a rezoning rendering is versus a final design is very, very different. But I do have some issues with some of the property line pieces and, 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 and indeed the renderings of like. Adjacent buildings not existing, and I think those are, those are, are big issues for me, so I'm, I'm really struggling with this and I, I, I'm gonna. Uh, oh, I thought Councilor Dominado was online for a question, but, okay, I, I, thanks Gee, I think that's it for questions from me though.
Okay, thanks Counselor. Alright, so. Seeing no one else on the queue. Uh, I'm gonna ask clerk, did we receive any additional public comments since the close of this, uh, public comments? We did not, okay, thank you. Alright, so I'd like to remind Councilor Douch, we will need to, uh, need to move the recommendation for item six together with the yellow memo dated April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Entitled CD one rezoning, one twenty-one to one twenty-nine West eleventh Avenue. Council will now make a decision on this application, do we have a mover? Looking for a mover for this recommendation? Okay, yeah, so Councilor Dominado, please go ahead.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking procedurally, I don't have a motion at this moment, I'm, I'm just curious if staff, clerks could just confirm for me that given the late hour. Um, if council was interested in referring debate and decision, we've heard from speakers. Um, and to the next council meeting, will we be able to still do that? I don't think I need to move the recommendations of the report. Can you just comment on the procedure of that, sorry, I'm clearly very tired.
That's, that's correct, you would be able to move a, uh, a motion to refer, um, without moving the, the recommendations.
Right, just to refer the debate and just. Yeah, okay, um, I haven't had a chance to canvas that, um, with council, I'm just musing on it right now, uh, just given the hour. Um, maybe I'll throw that out there and, and send that in writing. Well, just give me one second, I'll put that in.
Okay, do you need a recess, Counselor? Okay, so let's take a two minutes recess. We're gonna be back at eight forty-two. Okay. Okay. So. Hey, Councilor Dominado? Yep. Okay, I'll turn your mic.
Thank you. And. Thanks for the graciousness of a couple of minutes just to draft. Um, so I've circulated and council should have it in their inbox and clerks can put it up, up that council referred debate and decision of this item as unfinished business to the next council meeting of May sixth. Starting at nine thirty A M in the council chambers and by electronic means. Um, and I'm just floating it out there, obviously for debate, um, but, and consideration of council, but, um.
Okay, we need a second there for this amendment? Second by Councilor Claussen? Uh, Council, is there any debate for the amendment? Oh, so main, main motion, okay, yeah, so any other questions or comments for this main motion? Councilor Claussen?
Yeah, I, I will support the referral and, and the reason is being is that, um, I think we've sort of got, uh, intersecting. Issues that are arising, not the least of which is that it's very late in the day. Um, and, uh, a few of us have been going for a good fourteen, fifteen hours already. Um, and so, um, having the ability to make a clear consequential decision at this time is, is, is not the greatest. Uh, but we've had a, I think, a, a series of themes in terms of the, um, this conversation. Um, one of them being, uh, the renderings that we've been supplied, some of the sort of sloppiness in terms of the, uh. Mischaracterization of the, the existing neighborhood. Um, the, um, uh, I think desire for us to try and respond to some of the. Uh, aesthetic of the community when we are trying to, to build and recognizing that staff have said that, you know, these are things that'll come back into the more the development phase. It could go to Urban Design Panel, there's gonna be a guidelines, uh, document that'll be circulated. Uh, but all of those things are sort of moot at this stage because we have the public here who've come to talk to us about this project. And, um, and, uh, and we've heard nothing from the, the applicant. And I can tell you right now, if I get more, if I get applicants coming here not wanting to speak or, or, or speak to or answer questions about their projects, I'm not gonna look favorably on that. I'm saying that possibly because I'm quite tired tonight, but the fact is, is that we deserve to hear from the applicants. They're gonna bring a project to us, they have to be able to, be able to defend every detail of it. So I just want that to be heard, not just from this applicant, but other applicants. We have applicants who have come here and have spent a great deal of time providing extra information and context. And I appreciate that greatly and I want to recognize that when it does happen, when it doesn't happen, it makes this work much harder. And we're here much later than we ought to have been, this should have been a simple process, but it, it's been made harder by the lack of information. So, um, uh, those are my sort of comments on this for now. I'm, but I'd be happy to, to vote in support of referring this to the next council meeting, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, seeing no one else on the queue, so let's go to the vote for this referral motion. Council, please register your vote. On the referral motion. Counselor, okay. So the referral motion passed with, uh, Counselor Orr and the Counselor Maloney in opposition. Alright. Thank you, so. Recess or adjourn? Adjourn, okay, so we need a motion to adjourn this, uh, public hearing. Motion moved by Councilor Claussen, Claussen, uh, second by Councilor Orr. This, um, public hearing is now adjourned. Oh, all those in favor say yeah?
Yeah.
Post in a. Okay. And do we need to remind people not to talk about this project? Okay, yes, also to remind everyone that this, uh, item is not finished, so please, uh, do not comment or talk to the, uh, applicant for this item until the, uh, after the. May ninth council meeting. Thanks everyone, good night.